We said that eighty-five percent of our students would be within or above widely held expectations. And we actually did a little bit better than what we hoped, where we had eighty-five point six percent. In our language and literacy domain, and that's really looking at vocabulary, attending and understanding, feeding and awareness, alphabet knowledge, we wanted ninety percent of our students to be both within or above widely held. So we were a little bit lower at eighty-two point six, but eighty-two point six is still fairly good in terms of kids being prepared to start their literacy journey. For our social emotional domain, we wanted, and this is one where we're focused on, because if kiddos can start self-regulation and knowing how to deal with certain situations, they can start managing other things. And so we wanted ninety-three percent of our students to be within or above, and we had eighty-seven percent. So again, almost close to that number that we won, so again, we did well there. And then finally, with our perceptual motor physical, one of the things that I've always mentioned in the past five years is that typically, especially in the physical area, any of our students BMI is too high, and so we try and get that, try and get that more even. And so we wanted eighty-four percent of our kiddos to be within that, but we had seventy-three percent. So I think that shows is the work we've been doing with kids and with parents is making an impact with the choices they're making at home. So here's the big thing about the twenty-six thirty grant. The big thing you have to know is that there's no significant changes in the way that we're going to operate. Because as I've shared with you before, we're considered a high-quality program, especially since Head Start always recommends other programs to kind of visit us to see how we do things. The other piece I want to main, point out is that we are going to maintain our main flexibility and responsive to the evolving federal and state guidelines. So like I shared with Amy last night and the rest of the Poli Council, I'm just going to preface the grant application that you got from me earlier is not the one I will be submitting, because I was giving, given some new performance guidelines yesterday, two o'clock, to submit a more streamlined grant application. So the eighty-five pages that you receive will be pared down to thirty. So it'll look dramatically different. But you should know that we started this journey with our P three initiative, and with the P three initiative, we're hoping to make some changes in our program about how we deliver services to kids, not only in preschool, but moving it up through third grade. So instead of pulling down, we're pushing up. And then finally, tied to our work is the focus on continuous improvement, because we believe in improving what we do for our families and for our kids, and that will continue through our application. So before I get started into what, like for the grant period, just so you understand where this is all coming from, these are all the pieces. Oh, can you go back one more? So we did align our standards, the early kindergarten outcomes framework with the Colorado standard. It was all data-driven. We looked at our data from the five years, and we actually, we can go back twelve years to look at our widely-held data for TS Gold. We looked at also our three-year-old data to make some informed decisions about what we wanted to see happen next year. It involved a lot of collaborative input from different stakeholders, including from the community, our staff, Poli Council, and the board. You had an opportunity to look at our self-assessment and our community assessment that helped form the basis of our grant. We did a lot of family and community feedback in terms of surveys, especially from our parents at the end of each year. And then finally, we wanted to make sure that when we did our planning, that was aligned with the work that's happening in Thompson School District. So we're excited about our goals that we've set for the upcoming year. So the way to look at this is we set an overall goal, and then each year we set an objective to contribute towards meeting that goal. So our first one is again tied to attendance. We're going to maintain that eighty-five percent attendance rate. And if you look at the objective, it's similar to the goal, because we're targeting that eighty-five, because it's always a fine balance. We want kids to attend, but we don't want a reason to have kids come if they're sick. So we're making sure we have that in place. Our second goal is creating opportunities for families to partner with staff supporting their child's competence. Just don't, Laurie, can you move the next slide? Thank you. And so because it's a new grant period, we kind of look at it as a refresh. So we're going to make sure that all parents in our program have opportunities to participate in the positive solutions for families, and that supports our pyramid slash the positive behavior intended to support that we have for all of our students in the district. So it's aligned with the BK through twelve system. Goal three is to ensure the effective use of our resources by implementing sound fiscal practices. And more importantly, that we're going to continuously monitor spending, streamline operations, and enhance services while remaining fiscally responsible to our stakeholders. So tied to that specific goal, our objective for this year is to review and update our current fiscal policies, with it being done by August first and implementation by August fifteenth before the start of the school year. And that will tie directly with our F one audit that we have coming up somewhere between October and April. So here's where we get to the academic piece, our approaches to learning. We want ninety-two percent of our kiddos to be within or above widely-held expectations in cognition. And so those objectives are directly tied to it. So the first one is eighty-five percent of our four-year-olds will be at a level six on eleven C, which is solving problems. And eighty-five percent of our four-year-olds will be on level six in objective eleven E, flexibility and vulnerability and thinking. Our social emotional development, we want ninety percent of our four-year-olds to be within or above widely-held expectations by the end of the five-year period. So for twenty-five, twenty-six, we want them to attain a level six on twenty-two C, sorry, which is interacting with peers. And that's being able to problem solve and come up with solutions for issues that may come up. In mathematics, we would like eighty-five percent of our students to be within or above widely-held expectations. And so for the next year, we want a level five for twenty C, which is counting numerals and quantities, which we believe will contribute to the overall learning for the students in mathematics. Language and literacy, the fighter goal is four-year-olds meeting or exceeding the domain of language and literacy. And so by the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, eighty-five percent of our students will attain a level six on objective nine A, and that's a vocabulary. And then finally, with our perceptual motor and physical development, we are really focused on active supervision and safety. So we want to, our staff to demonstrate a hundred percent of the time what active supervision looks like in your classroom. But for the students, the most important thing is that they become familiar with the routines and safety habits of the classroom. So we want eighty-five percent of our students by the end of the first year to understand the routines and meet those expectations by then. So we think we could accomplish that. So like last time, I managed to compact eighty-five pages into twenty-two slides. So with that, are there any questions that you might have for me?
Let's start over with Denise. Do you have any questions?
No.
Alexandra?
I don't.
Thank you.
I don't either. Thank you. Very complete presentation.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Great to talk with you.
Thank you.
Amy?
No.
You saw it last night, huh?
She did. She had to be this twice.
I don't have any either. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. All right. Our next item is three point two. It's Edmum, I'm not sure I say it right, Edmentum, online platform. So it's Sarah, Tiffany, Patty, okay.
Good evening. I'm Sarah, Assistant Interim Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services. This evening we have Tiffany and Patty with us, and they will be presenting the information about an online platform. So during the presentation, they will explain the need and the process, the adoption process, as well as the recommendations. So I will go ahead and turn a favor to these two.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Tiffany Jones, Director of Curriculum and Learning, and Patty here to support with the presentation. So we're excited tonight to talk to you a little bit about our online adoption. Very similar to what we just did, what, two weeks ago or three weeks ago with literacy. You're going to see the exact same format, and we'll go through the talking points. So as you will see here, our connection to Strive Twenty Twenty Five.
I'm trying to figure it out, y'all. Sorry. Let's see, okay, I.
Doing great, Kelly.
Doesn't like how the technology person's going to figure out diligent? Yeah, you know, it's not lost on me, everybody, so just.
We had a little trouble with it too.
On the next slide that is coming soon, you will see. You will see why we had a need for this. So number one, we really need to make sure our platform that we're using with students meets all of our accessibility requirements. We also wanted to make sure that we had a one-stop shop for our platforms. Currently, right now, we have two different platforms. We actually operate a different platform for middle school than we do high school. So as we think about students transitioning from middle to high, we need to make sure they're on the same platform. We also utilize this platform for SORs, which is the secondary options of achievement resulting in success. Thompson's TOL for high school, TOL for middle school, and then credit recovery. So we wanted it to have a good continuum, so students weren't learning multiple platforms for different reasons. And then we wanted to make sure, again, like I said previously, that they're on the same platform to make sure that they know what they're doing. Good job. So as you think about the phases, this again looks very similar to literacy. We took teachers from each of these programs. We sent out a survey, just really asking each of these teachers to give us some reasons and what their thoughts and feelings were, what were those values from each of the programs, to make sure we could streamline it. Of course, we included ITS in our process, administration, SORs, TOL, parents, students. And these were the criteria that the teachers used as we scored. So you will see content and course offerings. We had a huge interest in that area. Ease of use for obviously all user groups, flexible use in programs, making sure that we could use it in multiple programs, accessibility of course, and then content delivery. So as we think about that process, we had all of these platforms that we looked into. We know that online education is definitely, it's more out than out than it's ever been. And so we definitely needed to narrow down this list. So the online task force that was represented by each of those programs ended up drilling down to five programs after we did our initial review. So we developed our trial process. We went with these three. We do know that our teachers really love FuelEd. They wanted to keep it in the trial. I will tell you, FuelEd wouldn't have made the cut. We asked them to narrow it to two, but if they really wanted to keep three in there, and so we said, great. If we've got that big of an interest in FuelEd, let's keep it in there and give it a fair trial and do all of the data like we would. And so we kept three in this trial. So of course, we had our trainers come out here. We had one that was virtual, one came in person, trained the staff. We did a five-week program, and then students were chosen and selected to trial. And so we had a huge interest in all of the teachers trialing, but students were specifically chosen to trial, because again, we don't want to put a student on a different platform if that really would have not been great for the student. And so we hand-selected those students. Then of course, we got feedback. And so we then brought the data back to the full online task force. You will see that Edmentum was the platform that scored the highest. And then of course, along each step of the way, just similar to literacy, we voted on each. When we think about the considerations for the online platform, you will see here that we really needed to determine what does true engagement look like? Does that mean just passing classes, or does it mean those response, you know, answers? Does it mean taking each component of the class? Or are we just doing quick checks for understanding, but truly defining what engagement looks like? Then what does platform integration look like, making sure, working with Kelly Sane's team, making sure it's easy, and we're not putting things in Google Classroom and ClassLink and Infinite Campus? Also, what does professional learning look like? Because we've had these two platforms since COVID, and they're very familiar with these two platforms. So as we're bringing out a new platform, how do we make sure that teachers are feeling very confident in using both of these? We also wanted to make sure that our course offerings were available, and that we had a wide range that supported what we were doing in our brick and mortar. We also had a huge interest in making sure that our offerings were aligned to NCAA. Our current platform is not, currently, all the courses are not verified by NCAA, and we did not want that to interfere with students. And so we made sure that all of the courses that we are looking at are directly aligned with NCAA requirements. So as we look at our online task force, we wanted to make sure that, of course, we had teachers, students, families along the entire way. We really wanted to create that transparency in this process, knowing that we needed to look at this platform and of course, put it in front of teachers, making sure that they know we just didn't make this decision arbitrarily. We wanted to make sure that everybody understood that the online task force voted on each step of the way, and of course, voted on that decision to make sure that we had that collective agreement before we moved forward. There were subcommittees in here that of course, looked at the data and the communication, much smaller adoption. However, we wanted to make sure that those stakeholders involved certainly were communicated with. And then of course, the online task force is making the recommendation to you all that we move Edmentum forward for our adoption for all of our programs that are using online. So as we think about what the learning and costs will look like, years one through three, we always look at that initially. Our goal is to onboard all stakeholders, and that doesn't mean just teachers. What is onboarding for families look like? What does onboarding for students look like? We also want to make sure that our program integration with an integration specialist. I do not understand the integration and the clouds and everything. Kelly definitely is our guru on. And so again, when we're talking about what does that look like through ClassLink, I need definitely that support. And then of course, making sure with this platform, there actually is a full-time customer service manager that is ours at any given time. If there is some glitch, that person is ours for the full duration of this contract. So when we think about the cost, this is the cost for three years. We're looking at a three-year commitment. Again, when we think about online, everything is always, there's always something else coming out there. And so this is different than our literacy, knowing that this is not a six-year, this is a three-year, because again, we want to keep current, and we know technology is changing every day. There is no additional cost for our customer service support person. There's also no additional cost for courses that are used multiple times. Currently, we have, our current contract is, once we utilize that license three times, we would be required to pay more. This platform, actually, we are able to use as many licenses for as many courses as we want. And then of course, there is no additional cost per teacher. Typically, what happens is you say, I've got ten teachers with TOL, SORs, and credit recovery, and then they would charge you for anybody additionally. And so again, that's what's included in this package. So these are student quotes from Edmentum. We do know that the students love the videos. As they're starting to get online, it's not all just reading. This platform also reads to them. It's in multiple languages. They also have a coding and an annotating device, things that you would see typically on a CMAS or in a brick and mortar experience. We also know that some of their biggest feedback is they got feedback immediately. The kids knew exactly how they were doing, and they knew it instantly. And so it wasn't they were waiting two days for a teacher to assign their score. They knew immediately if they were doing well or had some gaps to fill. And then we also know that the writing assignments in social studies came with some great structural support. What that means is they gave them an introduction. Write an intro paragraph of what you just read. Now write your supporting statement. You're going to read another comparison essay, and now you get to write your claim and say, are they contradictory or are they supported? So it actually gave them a framework, sort of like what we would do in a classroom. It's giving them a very structured experience, so they're not getting a different experience online that they would in person. It also gave them step-by-step writing practice to make sure we know that writing is a huge improvement area for us. But it guided the students through that versus saying, just write an essay. It helped guide them through what does an essay look like? Because you don't have that human there telling you, ooh, that opening paragraph needs some work. And again, students really did appreciate this platform when compared to what they're on right now. It is definitely, when we think about accessible, again, it will read to them, it will help annotate, it will look up vocabulary words, it will help you tag an item like, ooh, I need to come back and think about this sentence because it doesn't quite make sense. And so again, student, students were very, very favorable about this one.
A couple, just a couple of things is their accessibility, they do it in a very different way. So a lot of programs, if we read it in a different language, they use actually like a linga Google pathway. This is not that. It is actually full-on in the system, not having to be translated through a Google type of thing. It's the best thing out there. The, I can't speak enough about the accessibility, because when we look at the data, students who have some learning needs really struggle, really struggle on our previous platform. And although this wasn't a factor in the decision, it's a third of the cost of what we had before, approximately. Our other company raised prices after the budget approval, and we couldn't do much about that. So, and we had to be very careful about the slots that we were given. So we spent about that for one year, and so now we'll be able to be a steward of our dollars and provide a really excellent program for our students seeking an online option.
And we're changing quite a few ways in the next steps right here. When we think about what that integration with Infinite Campus, currently, right now, everything is stored in FuelEd. We're really switching that, where now everything is stored with a platform. The teachers are scoring in Infinite Campus, meaning parents and students will have their scores, just like they were in brick and mortar in Infinite Campus. So at any given time, anybody can see and track how students are doing. They'll go through that just like ClassLink. We have very few students who are full-time online, and so we really wanted it to match what we're doing in the building, knowing the majority of our students are still tied to a high school or middle school. We know that we're going to coordinate that training with Edmentum for TENS Week to make sure that onboarding is there. And then we want to finalize the courses being offered, and then of course, collaborate with our counselors and our registers for enrolling students. And we are creating those courses right now to make sure they're also tagged in Infinite Campus, and again, it's on a student's schedule. The big one for that is really making sure at any given time, students are not, are not lost. Whereas a counselor, if I'm in the brick and mortar and I'm online, as a counselor, I'm able to go and see exactly how this student is doing, even in courses when they're not with us during the typical day. And so we wanted to make sure that was a huge interest of ours, to make sure that again, we can keep track of what every online student is doing in real time. We've learned a lot about online schools. What questions do you have?
Okay, I'd start with Alexandra.
So I've sort of gotten an inkling from a couple of things you said, but one thing I was wondering about between, like the difference between the Edmentum wasn't that much more than the FuelEd or Fuelled. And so what I was curious about is what was sort of the deciding factor that made you feel like it was worth it to go with a totally new program rather than sticking with that one that also did pretty good? And the, you know, people liked, you said the teachers liked it. So what was, yeah, so just a little bit more clarity on that.
Accessibility has to be our guiding factor. When it's not accessible for students, we really, I would say our teachers have a lack of understanding of what full accessibility means. And that is just something, when you really put something in front of kids, that has to be our guiding force. And so that was when we said, we were getting together, saying, this has to go through the adoption process. We can't add enough tech tools to make FuelEd fully accessible.
Okay.
Another piece for our middle school program was the data for students wasn't as secure as our new platform.
Okay.
So when Kelly Sane says, no, thank you, I listen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Stu?
Um, a question and then a comment. Are there districts in Northern Colorado, in Colorado, et cetera, that are using Edmentum already? Who have a track record, and did you talk with them, and what do they have to tell you?
So north, southeast, and west all use Edmentum. Edmentum is in St. Rain, it's in Cooter, it's in Windsor.
Oh.
And so it is all over our state right now. And so when we spoke, and we've already had some collaborative calls of what is working really well, how are you monitoring? There's a group next week, actually, from surrounding districts about Edmentum.
Very good.
And so we have reached out to them to say, give us your, kind of the good, the bad, the ugly, what works really well, give us kind of those pieces. But yes, most of the surrounding districts actually utilize the same platform.
All right. And then just quickly, my comment is, as I shared with you during the two plus two on the literacy adoption, was very impressed with the robust process you used. It was organized, there was a lot of teacher involvement. And I feel like what you're presenting to us and what you've chosen for approval is something that you thoroughly vetted. Not just district administrators, but teachers, comments from the students were very important to me. And so congratulations on continuing that process. And I hope that everything that we receive regarding an adoption will be done with this depth of investigation. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think it, it is a really nice way that it's coming through. And so I'm excited to see what this looks like. I've spent a lot of time with P, so it'll be interesting to see one that has more accessibility and more variety. I think that's really exciting.
Nancy?
Um, just what Stu said, I really like this, you know, comparatively, I have the new methodology for selecting curriculum. It's, it's a lot easier to follow for me, and it just feels more comprehensive. As far as this one, I think it's great that you found something that doesn't require a third-party bolt-on, because that always complicates your software, especially one updates, then it's like, well, but the third party didn't? Now what do you do? And I also like the, the same platform now for middle school, high school. So it makes it a lot easier for them when they go from those two different areas. The price, I wish it was less, but you know, it is what it is. And it sounds like it must, is it a software subscription that just simply renews at the end of three years, unless we decide to go for another one?
We would look at what is out there in three years. Are any adoption that, that year before end of our contract with them, we will always go back and say, okay, is this the best one? Or do we need to go through the entire adoption cycle again? Because of course, we want to see what else is out there.
Right.
Okay.
So it won't automatically renew unless we choose for it to.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No auto subscriptions.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I mean, thank you very much, what all my colleagues said. And I love the instant feedback, you know, for, for the kids, because, you know, my daughter will text me, and as I'm picking up my phone to get it, she's calling me because I haven't replied yet, you know? It's like that, they're so into that, you know, just, and I think for learning, you know, just that instant, you know, back and forth is great, so thank you. It's exciting.
Bravo. Yep, thank you very, very much. I know you put a lot of time on all of this, so we appreciate it. Oh, Denise, yes, I forgot. We moved over. I'm sorry.
Good. Again, another outstanding job and thorough. Just appreciate your diligence and, you know, capturing what our critical needs are and finding a platform that aligns with that. The translation piece is phenomenal. So happy to see that included in what we're getting, and we're not, it's not a, you know, pay extra for it. So very exciting.
Okay, that's all seven of us now. Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next item is approval of the project budgets and contracts for use of Monroe Elementary School sale. I thought it might be the two of you showing up.
Monroe here. Thank you, Madam President, Board Education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd Preppino, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Tonight, just aligned the Strive Twenty Twenty Five, it's just so the community board, the transparency, use of our resources for some of our critical maintenance needs. So a little background on this is we entered into a contract March of twenty twenty-five with the buyer. We're approaching the timeline to close, so assuming the city gives their kind of final blessing on June thirtieth, we are then set for closing on July eighth. So as this is approaching, it was time to start talking about and working through what, what to do with the assets. um what what to do with the assets. So in saying that, um it's good that we have that those dollars coming in. The challenging part is, is that this is a fraction of our overall needs. So staff spend time working through um the higher of the high priorities. So the next shows the actual list, but when you look at this, this is some examples of um everything that's happening, a few that um always hit the top. So I'll start just with the picture, it always shows more than sometimes just walking through it. Uh that bottom right is the structure at Mountain View High School Swimming Pool. The challenge is, is that the HVAC is old and um pretty much incomplete. We actually, the board approved to replace one unit um about a year ago, it's in the process of being replaced. There's two more units that need replaced. What's happening is the chemicals and then the humidity in the building is actually rusting the inside of the building. So it's um, you know, the piece that holds the building up. So it's it's something like that that you see is a pretty high dollar ticket. Um same thing about view, that's the tennis courts, they have not been um been able to compete on in almost, this is I think be the third year. Um they use Mahaffey when they're scheduled at home, they use Mahaffey as their home court, so they go there. Um so anyway, just a couple of pictures of what um a couple of items are. If you go to the next slide, provided more detail as far as what the list actually is. So we can go through um each item as well. I actually could go through if you want, but I'll kind of hit some of the highlights. Um the first two are really, well, there's an updated slide, but um sorry, go to the bottom. Uh start with the third-party ADA assessment. So what we've learned in the last year or two is as good as staff is, we're also not the ADA experts to, you know, go inspect everything. So proposal this is to go through and say, okay, hire a third-party that's um you know, outside of the district, say, okay, go look at our buildings, provide us truly what is needed. And then a long-term plan because it's not um even the five million, you know, uncovered, it's in the that ten, it's the twenty million, it's it's a lot throughout the district. So the proposals to go through, it really is take a step back, figure out the what we need on the ADA side. And then you'll see there's a budget then to start some of that work. So even seven hundred thousand for that. Um if we go back towards the top, um look at that, it's different. Mercury flooring, so we found uh we had to test some flooring, it was um it's a typical type of flooring that other districts have seen uh come up with mercury, and so we tested it recently and it did have an off-gas mercury. So we did communicate with the staff, we communicated with the parents, we put things in place to keep it safe now. But it's not something we can just um ignore and um let sit there. So so when you looked, when you talked about the higher priorities and all the things, pieces we have, you know, these are the pieces that hit to the top. Another example is um Thomas Valley Pool's been shut down now for a good month-ish. Um there's no gas line to it, the gas line broke in the leak. So anyway, we, if there's more questions on specific ones, we talked about it, but what we did is we have um in our master plan, um that the NBC went through is the high priorities, medium and low. Um so this is coming off that list that um, you know, we've taken off to help kind of um just barely meet all the high priority needs. So um yeah, so that that's really is just it. The proposal is really to not move forward until we get the actual cell complete. Um but with summer coming and some opportunities in front of us, if we don't start talking about it now, we're out till August, September before approval, so we want to get ahead a little bit here. So the uh what it looks like really, the next board meeting would be the hopeful um an action consent memo that we've done similar before to show the budget for the projects. Um the board policy that shows the contracting piece, how we contract them, um and then the types. So it'd be similar to a bond type memo that we've used before that would show budgets and pieces. So that's the um proposal tonight for discussion, so I will stop there and turn it off for questions.
Start with Stu.
Just one question, Todd. Um regarding the ADA work, because the school district is a public entity, are we required or not required to meet all ADA standards? How does that work?
We're required. I mean, we we have to show um, we have to have a plan in place and show what that plan is. I mean, obviously with, you know, we could have thirty million and probably just be scratching the surface of getting to a compliant place. What we have to do um is like, here's what we need to do and have a place to show how we can keep um, you know, checking off the compliance pieces.
All right.
In the meantime, in the meantime, we do have the ability to comply with ADA on a programmatic basis until we actually deal with the physical. So maybe relocate in a classroom on a place that is handicapped accessible
Okay.
or accessible to the basic of the person's needs. So there may be something we had to be done in the short term, but we want to deal with it longer.
That makes sense to me. Um obviously, to be fully ADA compliant would probably cost millions and millions of dollars, which at this point we don't have. So the, what you said, that it's important that we have a plan, that we can demonstrate to whoever asks that maybe we we aren't able to do it right now because we can't afford it, but it's all part of a plan. Am I understanding you correctly?
Exactly, and that's coming from, that's coming from legal counsel that kind of said, here's, here's our recommendation, I'm going to have to uh work through this.
Okay, thank you.
So just fall following on in that, for the assessment, is it going to be a district-wide assessment to get that the priorities more reviewed?
Yes.
Okay, and then and then that'll go into the plan because we know that we're only allocating, even if we allocate all of it, it wouldn't be enough to cover what we know is going to come back, right? Um so how do we just determine um what ended up on this list, knowing that that we have a lot of things on the high priority list? I know it's kind of, it's always a balancing act, so when we had just this snapshot, what was it that helped us decide this list?
There's been uh items that um, you know, Chris thinks in the audience, but you know, keeps us up at night.
Mm-hmm.
Frankly, that um when you look at the health and safety of students, and so it's, some of these are pretty easy to say, okay, uh this is health safety. The structure of a building, if we do something now, it's, we're going to have, like, you know, this is just pounding, you know, so the one point nine million now is, who knows what it'll be if we don't take care of it now. So it's going through and evaluating the true high needs and um staff has been through the list and we've, it's been an exhaustive process. And this is just like a snapshot of um the overall, we look at overall high priority needs, it's sixty-six million. So this is just like, just a little snippet of um what's there. So it it's, if you look at this, it's law around safety, um protected assets now, so does the cost of where the future, um all those pieces, which all relate into how we've scored some of these items.
And as I've worked with other consultants on the middle school level, they ask, do you want a fire truck or do you want a school? We need both. So the question is, how do you find the money for everything we need to do? And so this is part of that process.
Nancy?
Um first, I really appreciate you putting that into the um presentation, that list that you had sent me based on my request. I I shared it out today and just to let you know, there was really positive um response to that list. And the the community really appreciated that level of detail and transparency. They really liked it. Now, I'm not going to tell you that they liked everything that was on the list, but they really liked, they appreciated that level of transparency. So I think that's a good um kind of measure of, if this is where we can get to, then a lot more of the community again, they may not always agree with our choices, but they like, they really liked that level of transparency. For me, um I know I'm still waiting for my second half of the request because I think it's important that as we take your feedback, that as the board, it's ultimately on us how we decide that we are going to um allocate and spend the taxpayer resources. Um I'm a little concerned on some of these, like the clock that Chester requires. I mean, if if they've been requiring it and we haven't done it, is there a reason we have to do it now? Because the fact is as long as we've been, um since I've been on this board, we had never done the resolution that says we agree with all of their buy laws, so why is this suddenly I think it's like two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um I think some of these especially at the, on the athletic level, should wait because I, we need to make sure that the classroom, school stuff that's high priority is addressed first. Um that's my, I, that's my perspective, and I would really like to see the hi, only the high pri, not the whole list, the high priority list. I think the whole list would probably um be too much, but um so I mean, that's, that's my, that's my take.
One more. A question was asked and answered, thanks.
All I would ask is as you get the money, make sure that what you work on can get done before the kids come. If possible.
Uh there's a couple that we're working on, not all this will be, so like the mercury flooring, that's the, that's what we're really like to have to do.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, there's something to have to be, but if you can do things that aren't, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll do what we can, yeah.
Denise?
My question was answered, thanks.
And Alexandra?
I don't know if it's really a question, I mean, I think, you know, the ADA case is obviously concerned. Um but I think also like the tenant, like the tennis court piece, I think is also like potentially a violation of Title IX. Is that true?
Um I wouldn't say it's a violation, I'd say we
What potential? Are in risk of.
We need to be aware of it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and so I think, I I think you guys are doing, it it's hard, I mean, obviously it would be wonderful to have the you know, money we need to fix everything. I appreciate, I like, I like the the allocating the money for the full ADA audit, I think that's great and needed.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And so I think that's important, and then I think that needs to be something that's always, that we're always, always chipping away at where, wherever and however we possibly can while at the same time not allowing our buildings to fall down on top of people.
Yeah. And I will say too, that uh if these budgets adjust, we, just like it did in the bond, we would go back to the board and community and say, oh, this is this much, it came in this much, so um you know, this is kind of the budget that we work under. So if something did come in over or we had to adjust, just as we did a bond project, we come back to the board and say, this is, you know, the Y behind where the numbers are at, so.
Okay.
Todd, when is the anticipated closure?
Uh July eighth, assuming June thirtieth, those two.
Can we ask past the city?
Can I ask one follow-up question?
As long as it's not long-winded.
No, that's not me. Um my question is on the um competitive bid process? Because many of these are um at the twenty-five thousand or more, will you be um following that process? Was that part of what you were talking about presenting?
So yeah, so the memo, just like we've done before, it's policy F E G, um and it outlines how the debt process between twenty-five, we have standing orders that we've issued, we have different pieces within that, but yeah, we follow up our policy.
Okay, okay, thank you. Nice and short, too, Nancy. Um thanks. We're ready to uh keep this evening rolling, thank you though. We're ready for uh three point four, which is the superintendent's evaluation. Sounds weird, doesn't it, knowing that he's leaving? Okay, Tom?
Uh Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Tom Tisher, Director of Human Resources, thank you for having me tonight. We have a a presentation that um you've seen a few times, so I'll go through some of the highlights of the presentation and get to questions for you. Um this is uh focus area three, uh human talent for Strive twenty twenty-five. The next um slide talks about um our commitment to evaluate the superintendent and that it's one of the fundamental responsibilities of the school board. The other pieces are board policy, CBI and CBIR, that details um the the process and and details the specifics that we go through for the evaluation of the superintendent on an annual basis. And then the next few slides um talk about the details of the Strive strategic plan and um the other components that we put in play for all of the purposes of the documents and things. Um there have been forms that have been shared with you previously, and if if anybody needs um uh those forms again, I can provide those here within the next couple of weeks. Laura Lee has um 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 emailed everybody the blank um evaluation form to all board members and um just, just today, yeah.
Today, it's today, I looked at it.
It was a secret until a little bit.
Yeah, yes, it was.
Um and so it is, it is blank, and of course, there's a um scoring component and a um a narrative component. And I just ask that um as board members, you um complete those, submit them either directly um to Laura Lee or to myself. I'll compile that document um and have it um ready for a presentation upon the eighteenth for the um board meeting at that point. And then um Barb will discuss the process of signatures and things like that at that point.
Okay.
But um if you could have that to me by the Friday the thirteenth, that would be great, and then we'll have to compile it and put the scores in. Just happen to be a month, Friday the thirteenth. And so the other piece of the presentation um is the timeline, um that we've, you know, we've got a different timeline this year. So uh some of those dates that we had had initially to put um for the um finalization of the evaluation are just a little bit off. But in in general, we have the eighteenth to complete this and present and Barb and Mark to sign off on the evaluation. And so we'll get it completed before um the last board meeting of June. So is there any questions from the board that I can answer?
Um starting with Dawn.
No, I mean, are we going to sit down and have the
You all have to do your own.
But yeah, are we going to have the meeting to go with it?
Yeah, but exactly, yes.
But executive session where we go over feedback.
So that that has been the, that has been the plan um previously, and so since this is a process of us completing and finalizing,
Mm-hmm.
that's something I think the board can decide, or or Barb, you could direct on how to, to finalize the evaluation.
Well, I I think that we have to get the data first and um share it with Mark, but it's also you're in town right after that meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to figure out a way, if you, if you want us to have a a executive session and go through everything like we have done, or talk to what you think would be helpful.
Um I mean, it's an ex, it would happen before the meeting, and I'm
Right, it would have to be an executive session on.
I'm fine with what the board wants, if the board wants to need an executive session to discuss that, I'm fine.
Okay. Indication please. Shrugs, I don't know.
I mean, it is a different year, and so that's why I want to, you know, I wondered.
Yeah, yeah, that's a weird.
I mean, I I could take a look at it and let you know.
I mean.
We'll have to do his part online.
We would be ending it with, you know, a very robust review and to walk out the door, so.
So let's tentatively plan and we'll talk as we, yeah.
And I'll get the, I'll get the document compiled with everybody's input as soon as possible, so that he has to make a decision Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday before the board meeting.
Right. Yeah, sounds good. All right. Dawn asked a question, right? Nancy question? Amy? Denise?
No.
Alexandra?
I guess my only question was for Mark. Would it be helpful to you for us to sit down together um to go through it? Or are you fine just to receive the the written copy?
Yeah, my my thinking is in establishing our one-on-one meetings, which I've had now with four of you, one of the parts of our conversation has just been to ask you for your candid feedback. You've all been open with that, and so that's been super helpful. And as you know, I know that the board has has always spent a lot of time on the evaluations with very robust feedback and comments. Um there are definitely uh themes uh that have emerged on both for opportunities as well as for for blows. Um I'm like I said, I'm I'm okay with not having an executive session, knowing that I've had the one-on-one with each of you, or will have had it by then. Um but if if the board would like to have that closure and an exec session, I'm I'm pretty supportive too, so I can process with uh.
Okay, we'll, we'll be in touch. All right, thank you, Tom. All right. I think you probably should just, oh, Laura Lee took care of that, she sent it all for us. Right, Laura Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Wasn't that long list of things that we got from you?
Um no, I just, like, sometime between five and seven, nine, yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, we'll be looking for it, towards the end of that stack that we got then. All right, the next item is uh three point five, which is the notice of um designated election official. And this is basically just the protocol that we have to go through to approve Laura Lee as our edit?
Designated election official.
Okay, designated ele- Okay, designated election official.
D E O.
D E?
O.
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 D E O.
O.
D O.
Um so it, do any of you have questions about this? Because otherwise it just will show up on our next list, correct?
Yeah, and you'll lose, yes, and then what I'll do is just um I have to notify the county by July twenty-fifth.
Right, okay.
That we are participating, that's why we do it now, because we don't need to do it.
So.
Um go ahead.
I don't have a question, but it says the board will have four director district vacancies, which isn't true. And the part below is right, the B and S, but that just needs to be changed to three.
Yeah, three.
Yeah.
To four.
Or three, thank you. Right, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
No.
Any other questions? All right. The next item is um Colorado, state of Colorado interest-free cash flow loan. Bob.
Good evening, uh uh Madam President, Dr. Schaefer and the rest of the board. Uh one thing that's great about the state of that uh Colorado is that they have adopted an interest-free loan program. Because of the way property tax revenue comes out, there will always be a time when we will not have enough cash to pay our bills and our employees. And so therefore we come to you every year to approve the resolution. Um what was in your packet was the placeholder of last year's resolution. Uh you will be getting the actual documents, they actually came out the day after the packet was sent out.
Of course.
So for the full packet, you will have all the documentation that you normally receive for the proposed uh authorization.
So we can look forward to that as an email.
Yes. That, it'll be sent with the next packet.
Okay, okay. All right, Bob is staying there because the next one is three point seven, the resolution of budget adoption for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Actually, three point seven, three point eight and three point nine are all the official approval process that you will be doing hopefully.
Yeah.
But I will discuss this as part of the uh discussion item five point five.
Okay, so we're gonna just pull those.
That's fair.
Okay, thank you. And then three point nine, is that is that included in your?
That would be part of the process of the discussion, yes.
Okay. All right, so then we are at the end of, is that the end of the agenda for?
They just have standard action.
Yeah, standard action, which we see, which will include the personnel.
Uh.
Expenditures over.
Expenditures, if there is anything to read aloud, we do that.
Excuse me, I I would like to discuss item on the contracts greater than fifty-five.
Okay, but it's not, it's not tonight. Oh, wait a minute, is it is it posted?
Yeah, that it's right here.
It's on.
It is there, I haven't looked since, sorry, yes, that's fine, oh. Oh, okay.
I just put it up here.
Okay, just a minute. Is it up, on there? Okay, I can't see that still, all right, um. If that helps.
Thank you.
Okay Nancy?
Oh, that's much better. Um so my 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 issue, questions, discussion on this is that for the asphalt repair at Garfield Elementary, that's gonna come out of Fund twenty-seven. And also the, is it pronounced Z E O education?
Yes.
Um neither of these have been presented before the board before and the Z E O, it actually because of my request for information, found that that's a payment that will happen for four years in a row. So um I did just, um Bob and I had a great conversation this afternoon that in this consent agenda item, it's, it should be really more for like routine, like you know, we have to renew the annual, I don't know, USDA food contract or something. Whereas this Z E O is something that's, is a pretty significant investment that we talked about, maybe something like this should come before the board is a discussion, then it could go on this because there's no information about it and I think Kelly, do you probably, did you provide all that information on what, okay. Um I don't know if any of you have read the response, but so that's my concern is not so much that we're gonna, you know, that we're spending this, but that the process, that it's almost kind of backwards in that we'd never heard about the asphalt repair, but now it's gonna kind of add a Fund twenty-seven. I'm not really certain why that was determination was made, but that would come out in a regular presentation and same with um this almost a million dollar uh investment in the internet system and broadband, which is needed, but before it shows up on this consent agenda item, it seems like that the process is kind of, it's flipped, it's backwards. And that's really all I wanted to um bring to light. Bob and I had again, we had a really good conversation about it today. He had some different thoughts, I had some thoughts, so I'm not really sure where it's gonna land or if what you wanna add to this.
Sure, um one of the things that we started discussing, I started discussing this uh this afternoon with the superintendent, was to break out this section into three sections, ongoing, regular uh contracts, contracts that related to an item that a board had discussed in a study session, we would date that when that study session was there or there was a specific contract approval that the board had approved for similar to uh what what uh Todd was just talking about for a construction contract and items that uh may need additional discussion in the board meeting. So therefore you can actually have three sections within this, so we'll uh we'll determine how we actually can do that on a going-forward basis.
Thank you. All right. Stu, I think we have Casby report.
Okay, yeah. Um I call your attention to the item that I ran the yellow highlighter through. In order to become law, remaining bills must be signed by Ju- by June sixth, which is Friday. So ones that I've included here, uh these are five bills that um we've talked about before that um I I felt you would be interested in an update. Um I checked with my contact person at Casby and I said, so after June sixth, maybe sometime during the month of June, will you be sending out a list of all bills that were passed with a brief summary of what they entail and directing those folks who are interested to a place where they can get more information? And he assured me that that would be the case. And so that that is important. The fact that there are only five listed here means that these are ones that legislature approved and Governor Polis has signed. And so um the one that I'll spend just a couple minutes talking about is the first one, the School Finance Act. Um what I listed first is outstanding news for all school districts in Colorado that the budget stabilization factor was not renewed. Uh that's very important. Um the other item that I thought was particularly important was that uh the legislature did not enact Governor Polis's um wish of eliminating multi-year averaging. Uh that was not adopted and just a quick explanation, um averaging helps districts adjust to falling K twelve enrollments, which is happening in most districts in Colorado. Without averaging, districts would receive less money as enrollment falls statewide. So next year, as the bill was written, uh there will be four-year averaging. The following year, it will be three-year averaging. Uh they haven't decided at this point if it will go below that. But it's very important for us and for other districts to know that basically in regard to finance, we're kind of held harmless and that 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 we are experiencing declining enrollment, as all public school districts are, that the averaging means that we're not going to hit the bottom in terms of of funding. Um I hope you've had a chance to look at HB twenty-five twelve thirty. This is a bill that was introduced late in the session, I'm not gonna spend time now going through it. Um as I said, it was introduced late, it passed, and it does uh offer an opportunity for additional revenue uh for school districts. Um let's see, we we spent some time also talking about um twenty-five eleven thirty-five, which is communication devices in schools. This bill was actually signed several weeks ago and I let Dr. Schaefer know as soon as it was signed because we will need to draft some kind of a policy that's consistent with the bill's language and intent regarding cell phones, so.
And we have until the end of this school year to do so, we'll just do that well before, but yeah.
Yes. Okay. Um so I think that's what I have in regard to my report and I will uh let you know as soon as I receive the the full report of the bills that uh actually will be en- will be enacted and then we can draw conclusions as to how that is going to impact our school district, so.
All right.
That's what I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on to our study section, study session discussion items, five point one is the landing youth shelter update.
Hi, you all.
Hi.
Nice to see you again. Nice to see you guys. Um thank you guys for having us this evening uh to present a little bit more about how has the first ninety to a hundred and twenty days gone um within the landing, um so you can. So I just wanted to remind us a little of what was our mission set forth as we started on this journey together and that is to really provide a space for comprehensive programming for youth and young adults um who are experiencing homelessness and to develop life skills and access to those vital resources um including secured, stable housing moving forward. Um as we entered into this journey together, that kind of was our guiding light to our purpose and our goals. So the program has continued to be robust with community partnership. Um that has been a staple and that was a staple when we started the um project um about two, three years ago. Um and these partners have continued to kind of shine through and be very much at the table, ongoing conversations with us um in different capacities. I'll highlight the community kitchen, um provide some of the meals for us. Um they have, they already have a robust system in play, um and so they're able to provide the meals. We're not having, we've used our beautiful kitchen, as many of you have seen the kitchen, we use that beautiful kitchen. Um but we do have the opportunity to um have the community kitchen come alongside us and provide those meals to us um in partnership along with Sunrise Community Health. And we were able to get an exemption process um through the state to be able to use the um school-based facility that is less than a mile away from the building um to be able to access those uh medical needs for the youth and young adults. And they have been a wonderful partner, um supporting throughout the process, but also supporting bridge medication as individuals come in and more needing um supportive medication um during their stay. And also Summit Stone, Summit Stone has come alongside and offers the mental health support. So these are um five different areas that we work within, um the services for the landing and some are still being re- um kind of designed and will be implemented over the next year. Uh but temporary residential sheltering, so we're continuing that, uh providing that beds, um overnight sheltering and I'll get to those numbers in a couple minutes. Um but also crisis intervention, so mental and physical health. So oftentimes individuals who are coming through the shelter, um when they drop in services, have not had um proper access to mental and physical health over a course of period of time. And so being able to provide those resources through our community partners has been vital. We've really ident- identified the importance of that community partnership as we do not desire the youth and young adult to continuously have to come back to the landing to access those resources. So helping them identify and access in the community is really important. Family re- reunification services, um a lot of questions are, hey, a fifteen-year-old is staying at the shelter, what does that really look like? Um so we're really working alongside the Department of Human Services and Child Welfare. That is a federal, or state requirement of the landing, um and so we work within partnership with them. They have been at the table from the day one that we started this process. Um and that just because we're engaging with child welfare does not mean it's an open case of child abuse and neglect. Um but it, what it means is we're working on service provision to support transition home or support individuals into a um permanent supportive environment um as they continue to to need that ongoing beyond, um when they're fifteen, they shouldn't be staying in the shelter. And then educational life skills training, um I appreciated hearing tonight about the online schooling. You'll hear about a graduation of one of your guys' students who actually engaged in your online programming that helped her graduate this um just a couple days ago, a couple weeks ago. Um so continuing to work within uh the educational sector, within the districts that the youth and young adults attend. Um and then community outreach, so continuing, we continue every week to have um tours of the landing. Um that was not something I anticipated, um but uh we see those very frequently, so. So just to give you guys some numbers, in the first ninety days, we supported twenty-seven youth and young adults. Um and in the first ninety days, that was three hundred and sixty nights of overnight sheltering and support. Um so we as an agency continue to grow our strength too with our ability to bring in youth and young adults and w- um have of the population in the milieu of all the youth together. And so we're gradually growing, um those numbers also are being impacted. Um these numbers were before our partners in Boulder County, um the ta- um together, um they shut down. Um and there is not a, does not seem that they will be um coming back onto the circuit of youth sheltering. So that now leaves us with three shelters on the front range, when we thought we were adding beds, um we're now just in hopes of maintaining. So we did take in several youth from the Boulder area. Um and then we also have consistently been getting calls for the Denver area right now, they are at capacity. So um we're continuing to grow our muscle uh to take in youth, um and young adults as we're growing. Um we, I would love to say we could take in twenty kids right this second, but there is some growing pains and learning and all of that as we go through that process. Um and you can. Um so this is just a story, um for, so we've had four youth graduate. Um and so one of them was from you all. Um so this was a young lady who had come to the landing in early February and when she arrived, um her education was pretty sporadic. She was not attending school on a regular basis, she was attending a comprehensive high school in your district. Um and so needing stability and long-term um support was really what she needed. And so McKinney Vento supported her along with uh the landing staff, provided her a space. Um and she started to gain those skills, um and she was able to um do credit recovery and secure employment. So she's in walking distance of the landing um with her employment and she's um secured a housing voucher with the Level One Housing Authority. And so just could, this is a, I think, a really shining light of what our hopes were from the get-go um of opening the landing, um and I think she really exhibits that um brightly.
And that, question is. Yeah, um Nancy, question?
I just think it's all great, I still remember the day uh Todd sprung this idea and as we were all on a bus, I think in 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 High Plains parking lot or something. We were touring schools and it was like, what, what do you wanna do? Um and so I'm just really glad to see how it's worked out, um and I love that story. It's too bad about that we're not adding, we're just maintaining now, but that's too bad, um but great work, thank you.
And I would recommend to, I I have told this to Todd many times, your district has done a phenomenal job. We, you can search high and low um to look for districts that would step in and provide this type of support and they're not there, um so you should be very proud of yourself, at least in Colorado, there is no other district that has done what you all have, so. Yes, thinking outside the box.
Yeah, that's right.
Amy?
Um I guess this is amazing, um you know, I love everything about it. What are some of the um, you know, growing pains that you like didn't expect or, you know?
I think the growing pains is learning, learning the space, learning youth and young adults in that space.
Mm-hmm.
Um i- in how that functions, right?
Sure.
Um it's funny because you build the space and then I assume you all experienced this with the classroom two or a new school. The day it opens, you realize, oh gosh, we could have done that or we could have done this. Um it's funny, the ceiling at the landing, um kiddos can actually climb up the soft, like where you can lay in the. Um, it's funny, the ceiling at the landing, um kiddos can actually climb up the soft, like where you can lay in the, um.
You can.
Yes, they can climb into the ceiling and they have demonstrated that to us. Um, and so like just those learnings of like little, you know, ability to be reflected.
Sure.
I think we have a state-of-the-art um security system and um system that we can monitor, which also has lended well to us too, so.
Well, thank you very much. I was gonna ask if any story that, that you just told it of things that you weren't expecting.
Things, uh, you know, and we do have kiddos who come, I c- I call them kiddos, youth and young adults, um that sometimes come with medical needs that are beyond our c- our ability.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's something I'm identifying as there are no resources for those individuals in our community and that's what's extremely challenging. But also being mindful of what is the capacity and the ability of the team and how does that impact the other youth and young adults in the space?
Right. Okay, thank you.
Denise? You said there were three shelters now, where's, you said Denver, Colorado.
Yes. Colorado Springs, San Antonio.
Us, yep.
Yeah. Alexandra?
How long have kids been staying? Like the three sixty divided by twenty-seven is thirteen, so it's like
So.
On average thirteen days or how long typically do they stay?
So what's interesting is we are bound by a state in federal law. Federal law requires that youth and young adults can only stay in a youth shelter for twenty-one consecutive days. That is the key word there. Um, and so we have youth, so the kiddo that um I told the story about, she has to she stays twenty-one days, she has to vacate for two and then come back. And so what we're doing is working with the youth and young adult to find a safe uh environment that they can go to for two days, that they come back. Uh, we have not ran into a barrier often with tho- that happening. So we have some who stay longer, some who stay shorter. I don't know the average right this second, but just that, we have seen more consistency. Our, when we first opened, we saw higher turnover, but we have seen stabilization within the last probably two and a half months of like longer-term kiddos, they get used to the routine um and the flexibility.
So you're open this summer? Will you be open?
Absolutely, yes.
And you'll be open all summer?
Uh-huh.
So this is a twelve-month program?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Twenty-four seven, yep.
Yeah, okay, great. And then just a comment. I'm proud to be associated with the Thompson School District for a lot of reasons and to be a board member, I'm proud of, of, of that as well. But there are very few things that we're involved in as a district that I'm more proud of than this particular service that we offer to our kids in need. And so thanks to the Matthews House for uh managing it and it's terrific that this has worked out.
Um, I'm, I'm glad we're getting a chance to, to check in on it. I mean, I do have questions, as you know, about some of the stuff that came up with, with the growing pains and, and also just trying to understand like what are those limitations, what are the barriers and then where on that great list of partners? And that's, I know just a, like a fraction of all the great people in this community who have been supportive of like where are the gaps that still exist in our community? Cause this is a project that exists that was addressing a, a gap in our community. And we know that it, it's not gonna meet the needs of all of the gaps that exist and you already touched on some of those. So um that's what I'm really hoping to understand next is like where, who is it that we can't serve? What are those challenges, what resources do we need? Because, um I, I think that this is an, an amazing project of, that speaks to how supportive our community is, especially when you can put the words around, this is what we need, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll, and um this was it like the brainchild of people really being able to finally articulate that instead of having this be a problem that was just under the surface and that the people who knew it knew it. But the rest of the community didn't even realize that there was a problem, let alone the, the, the size of it, right?
The need to.
And so, um, I think that you have the ab- unique ability to help us with that next level of whether the challenges still exist. So thank you for that, cause that's what I wanna think great about.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for taking time. I understand you just got back from somewhere too.
Thank you. I did.
It's hard to have to face this.
Good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, five point one, no, five point two is the Classified Staff Advisory Council presentation. This group of people will be the group that, remember last time we had our meeting, we had.
Council.
Yeah, that's about, and so but now we have uh the other, other group that supports our, so, hi.
Hello, everybody. Who remembers Dr. Schaefer?
Thank you for the invite.
Hi, I'm Alicia Rebo. I am the chairperson for the Classified Staff Advisory Council.
I'm Chair Flores. I'm the co-chair of the Classified Staff Council.
Yeah, and I'm Amy Combever. I'm the secretary for the Classified Staff Advisory Council.
Which position in the district?
Hmm?
Which position in the district?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know she uses phones.
My district. Um, and I have Kelly Stain here to vouch for me. Um, I am the telecommunications technician and project coordinator starting my twenty-fifth year.
One, two S D.
In our district, wow, great.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
I'm a, I'm the executive admin assistant to our assistant superintendent of operations.
Okay.
Uh, and I am our health desk technician for the district.
Okay, health desk, alright. So, tell us about it.
Alright. Um, hey, Norley, you can probably go to um slide number three. Um, our goals are always base and core values and strive twenty twenty-five for GSD. Um, Classified Staff Advisory Council is a longstanding, over thirty years, recognized representative group for classified staff in the Thompson School District. Um, we work um uh through our meet and confer um uh meetings that we have readily with leadership. That will include the superintendent, the assistant superintendent of HR, the director of HR. Um, and we are the problem-solving link um for classified staff um when it comes from um salaries, benefits, um workplace improvement, professional development um that can impact classified staff. Um, CSAC as of what we are volunteer, no-cost organization that represent all classified staff. They have a place to come to us, a safe place to come to us. Um, if need be, um with their ideas, recommendations, um and initiatives that they would like to develop and push forward. Um, you can go to the next one, Norley, thank you. Um, we have um classified staff um from across Thompson School District and have from all levels of our schools, elementary and middle school and high school. Um, from the HR division, from the ITS division, um from facility services. Um, pairs, um it's transportation, so we have and still do cover all different divisions and buildings, um to get a good mix and coverage of classified staff and the hard work that classified staff do day in and day out, all almost nine hundred. Um, we do meet monthly, the representatives. Um, we have moved to um Google Meet. Um, it helps with classified staff and I'm sure a lot of folks, um depending what time they get out or they can get home do what they need to do or pick up the kids. Um, then, so we meet monthly from beginning in September all the way through May. Um, we also, as I mentioned, um the same number, sometimes more. Um, our meet and confer team, which is comprised of the three officers you see here. Um, superintendent, director of human resources and assistant superintendent of, of human resources. So we bring forward proposals, recommendations on matters, as I mentioned, and salaries. Um, the evaluation system, which is something that we um went through with a fine-tooth comb um last year, which was comprised, there was actually, I had to turn people away. There was such a great response from classified staff that that's something that was very important to them. So from top to bottom, there was a great group of different folks from across Thompson School District um that sat on the evaluation um uh committee task force. Um, went through the entire, all the documentation, how the processes are as they currently exist and where we could find improvements. Um, it was a great success. It was done in a matter of six weeks. And um, and it's a compliment to Thompson School District. What we found is that and part of that was compare, comparing, excuse me, evaluation systems with other school districts. There were school districts that wanted to know, can you share with us your, your evaluation documentation, your systems? How you do your classified staff evaluation? So one of our, one of many proud moments that CSAC and classified staff in the district have worked on in, in our years. Um, so, um, go ahead, Norley, we're on to the next one, thank you. Uh, as I mentioned, the evaluation process for classified staff, we also had great success in um going through the classified staff handbook um which all classified staff are required to sign up on every year we get our, our notes. Um, that was also a great success. We've had things over the years and this has been, you know, part of the, the, our meet and confer and the great leadership we work with here in Thompson. Are the stipends that classified staff have received and how that makes them feel and recognizing, especially during our COVID years. Um, that was come on everybody from coast to coast for, for the course. Um, we have spent time on, over the last couple of years, on salary focus. Um, uh, obviously, and thinking for it, our braces have been consistent um over many, many years. Um, and um we've had, we did spend the last couple of years with focus on the pair professionals and bus drivers. Um, they are so critical to this district, um and getting our kiddos to school and our pairs that work alongside our teaching staff and the kiddos that they um help support and guide every day. Um, we've gone to the next one more. We're all here. Um, other community representation that classified staff and CSAC um representatives um have been on, have, and currently are on, professional development, where, so we work closely with Keith Lee and Aaron. Um, director of, of PD. Um, classified staff, thick lane, thickly baked, excuse me, joint Sharon's committee. We have um been part of multiple interview com- uh committees throughout the district and as well as education reimbursement. There have been other committees, actually, Ms. Ron Phil, I've worked with you, we sat on a committee a few years back. I know it's been a, it's been a little while, one of the Dr. Gabriel's committees, so.
Okay.
It's been a while, yeah, it's been a while. So that was Dr. Gabriel's Equity Committee. I mean, it's, it's a long, varied list. I, we work hard to keep classified staff involved with in regards to things by the Thompson School District. Um, so that was a really high elevation um overview of Classified Staff Advisory Council. Um, I even included a link um in the presentation of the board policy um that references um CSAC, um Classified Staff Advisory Council um uh for your reference. And with that, is there any questions for?
Let's check.
Has for?
Um, how do you, thank you very much for, you know, presenting us, it was, I mean, so much information.
You're very welcome.
How do you um reach out to new classified staff that, you know, you're, you're available?
So we've, it's done several different ways. Um, so for new employees during any of new employee presentation um that all the new classified staff attend, um very soon after they start with the district. Um, they are handed a packet with lots of different information and it also includes the Classified Staff Advisory Council flyer and newsletter. And that newsletter as well goes out electronically, um minimum six times during the school year.
Hmm.
Um, our form of communication is solely um through district email.
Okay.
Um, we prefer it that way and not to use um personal information, cell phone, personal email um and that type of thing. So we certainly keep it within district business. Um, and um then in advance, we've um started now with a um session um at the professional development um offerings that happen three times a year for classified staff. Um, it's now being regularly held over at Martin U High School. So that is another way. Now we're starting to host um our sessions um during that day or during those, excuse me, rather, three days. Three days of the right way to go. So, so that's a couple of different ways. And then a lot of face-to-face seeing folks. As telecommunications tech for the district and as long as I've been here, um I work at every school in every support building. Um, I'm, I'm one of those islands of one, um and it's a, it's a lot of fun. Um, and so I'm, I, I'm lucky enough to be around classified staff from all different parts of the school district. So I do have an advantage, I do admit that, uh with my job. Um, and then we rely on our representatives to work and talk to and let their, their constituents and the folks, their colleagues that they work with um if they have any questions, comments, concern. And we bring that back to the council, um the committee every um once a month, if not in between. And discuss those items, um find solutions, answers. A lot of time we'll bring it forward to meet and confer um with executive leadership, so we can discuss certain items, um seek counsel from executive leadership. You know, it, it's a, it certainly is a wonderful two-way street and then the system has worked out very, very well for it.
So what sort of items do you use, do you uh discuss at meet and confer? Is that salary, is that?
Benefits.
What, what is that? Because I ev- we see meet and confer, we get, or meet and confer meetings are such, but what do you do?
So we do discuss, um, excuse me, we do discuss salaries.
Uh-huh.
Um, that becomes um quite prominent during budget season.
Yeah.
I'm sure as you all well know, um, we discuss the different initiatives that um classified staff um would like to see and could benefit from. Um, professional development has been um quite prominent over the last couple of years. Um, the, the work and the achievements of professional development. Um, you know, for me, I can look back, when I started here almost twenty-five years ago, there was nothing for classified staff. We, then we worked it to the point back in that day, um we were able, we were successful in getting one day a year.
Mm-hmm.
Our welcome back day, which we turned into our professional development day. And we held those over at Thompson Valley High School. And, you know, with the great leadership in the district, there were several times where executive leadership actually cooked breakfast, observed food.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, there may or may not have been a pancake fight one day, when you. Um, so yes, um, so yes, salaries, benefits, um are, are typically the biggest um topics that we have. Um, HR and superintendent um keep us apprised of, and any types of um things that they are seeing, would say like with hiring, concerns about turnover in certain employee groups. What we can do to improve on that, um where we have certain employee groups. Um, so hiring and retention are, are crucial. So those are some of the, yeah, some of the few.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
I could go on, but you know, I was already, yeah, right there. I'm sure we've been a little tired, so.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah.
Denise? Yeah, in terms of rec- professional development, um and assuming there are certain classes or courses that you're required to take based on your job, that how does the um, the team feed up information and like make sure that you're getting the right training? Not just what others think you can get training.
So in regards to professional development and, and requiring, so the district, there are certain um thing like um uh CPR um that, um that really implies that you two are, are pairs, um show us. Um, and classes are offered during our professional development days. Um, not all classes necessarily. Not all classes necessarily happen at Mountain View. There's certain precursors that classified staff can take worries were bothered for it happened to be certified and certain things like CPA and CPR. We, there are other outside organizations that are brought in for certain classes like that. There are folks in the district that can do those classes. The other sessions that are offered for professional development vary from in person to self guided. Or certain groups of classified staff, say elementary school secretaries, because of what they share with their jobs, they have organized their professional development. And then there's online courses. So, it's it's quite varied what, yeah, the different types of courses required or not to get classified staff more and more involved. And hopefully career succession. We've even done, there have been classes hosted for resume building. You know, so it's like, we're not encouraging anybody to be, but you know, you know, investing in classified staff is is important.
Thank you. Alexandra?
How many people are on the on the council and how are they chosen or recruited or?
It's purely voluntary. Currently, we have ten folks that sit on the council. We, no one has ever turned away. And so, we always welcome and it's in our newsletter and flyers that go out that if you're interested in becoming a a member of CSAC. If not, please, you're welcome to join our meetings as as a guest. We provide a the Google link in all the, in our newsletter, so same link every time. So, people can now that thinking as we are, you know, we are now in a one, one to one devices for staff. And a lot of folks have their own devices at home. They can jump in on the meetings from home or if they still happen to be at the office. And we try and provide the the easiest path and more convenient and to, as well as long, at the same time, respect everybody's personal lives and commitments that we all have. So, everybody has to say, they can reach out to us via phone call, email, though, yeah. Everybody's welcome. There's no screening process.
Thanks. Stu?
I have three questions, Alicia. The first one is, do you also talk about working conditions?
Yes, we do. Absolutely.
You mentioned early in the presentation that you're a no cost organization. For example, you mentioned the newsletter. When is that done? By whom is that done? On somebody's work time or is that done at home? Or I want to, I'd like to have a little better idea of what no cost actually means.
So, there is no monthly dues. Classified staff have at any time are open to reach out if they need representation. So, if it comes to say, for example, as you said, Ms. Boyd, if it's a working condition, they classified staff can reach out to any of the CSAC members. And we set up a time, if necessary, to meet with HR. And a CSAC member will come in as a representative and to ask clarifying questions, as support, moral support, help answer questions prior to a meeting to help understand a process that for some folks can be sometimes a little scary. If they're coming to us and they've got real concerns, they want to know that they have a safe place and a person that is there to support them when they need it to attend meetings with them. If it's with their supervisors, their director, or we go into HR and help folks understand what the policy is that may be, you know, needs to be brought up that may be relative to what they're dealing with. Help them understand how processes work, understand board policies, understand classified staff handbook. So, yes, and so we do talk about work conditions. Absolutely.
All right. And then my last question, kind of has two or three parts to it. How many members do you currently have? Is is everybody in the district who's a classified employee automatically a a member of the organization or how does that work?
Well, personally, I wouldn't say a member of the organization. They have access to any of the Classified Staff Advisory Council. They do not have to feel like they have to. There's no cost or charge involved. If somebody calls or sends an email that I need help.
There's no membership fee?
No, no.
No membership fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do it. We have very supportive, especially for the officers, we have very supportive supervisors, directors, assistant superintendents, chief executive officers that have always been very, very supportive. Because it it does take time and can and has from our regular jobs. So, we are planning, we work very hard on so as we can continue to do our regular jobs. But there are times also to dedicate time to CSAC.
That makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. That takes care of my questions.
And actually, several of you answered as ones that I had, so thanks.
Okay. Nancy?
Nancy.
Yeah, I have a couple. I I would like to direct this question to Flora.
Tara.
Tara, sorry. Um, so, one of the things that I'm curious about is, in listening to what you've been saying, is that as a board, it, since I've been on it even before, I have not, I don't recall seeing this organization, this committee, present to the board or bring forward any initiatives or proposals or requests. And so, my question to you is, when TESPA gave their presentation, they had, I don't remember, they had a significant, a major, over a majority of signatures saying that they wanted TESPA. So, my question is, how do you address that? I mean, obviously, the staff, they feel like their needs aren't being addressed or met. So, how how can you help us understand what, where is that disconnect happening? Because what you're saying sounds great, but we also heard a lot of really powerful, moving comments last time. And so, how do you reconc, how how do we reconcile that?
That's a really good question. I I don't have the answer to that. All I can tell you, all I can say is, CSAC is here and we are available. We go to buildings, we, we're we're out there. So, the comment that they don't know, that they don't know CSAC or they don't know that we're available, I don't know why that is being said. However, we have heard about the TESPA presentation and we are spending the next couple of months this summer working on the, working on some solutions to get the classified staff more aware of who we are.
Okay. And then for Amy, I guess my question would be, you're the secretary of the organization. So, is there a way going forward, or maybe even why it hasn't happened in the past, that we, as a board, we get more reg, we get actual reports of what was discussed at the meet and confer? I know Dorothy for the APT, I I've seen her reports for meet and confer, but I have not seen, and I think that might be helpful to me at least, I don't, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but to know what's really being discussed. So, we're aware of issues that we as a board might need to address. Is that?
And this is my first official year as a a member and and secretary for Classified Staff Advisory Council. So, as I am learning those processes, happy to escalate all of that information. We have some very good notes that have been kept from our meetings with agendas. And based on the needs or requests of the board, we can absolutely provide previous notes, agendas, meeting notes for your review.
And I can add to that, Nancy. Pre-COVID, CSAC did meet readily with the Board of Education. Not this Board of Education. This is some years ago, that I had initiated a while back. COVID put a stop to that naturally. And then once we all came back to work, the decision was made that meet confer process brings forth what is discussed with CSAC, CSAC officers to the Board of Education. So, it may be time, though, now that we reunite that. Because, yeah, we used to, at minimum, once a year, there were certain years, it was three times a year, where we would meet, the, that the entire council would meet with the Board of Education for study session. Yep, very common.
Thank you. That's what we needed to hear.
So, yeah, we can certainly work on that to get it reinstated.
We appreciate that.
I'm sorry, you didn't, yeah.
We we just hadn't heard anything from anybody. So, that's why we ended up having them come talk to us. And now, then we invited you because we had not heard, and I've been on the board since my eighth year, and not had any inkling.
Yeah, it was, decision was made quite a while back that that was the preferred method.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, all right. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Five point three, equity update. Hi there.
Good evening. Sarah Rassison, interim assistant superintendent of learning services. And this evening, we have Dr. Gabriel and Patty Varden. And we are, well, they are going to present to the educational equity update for this past school year. And during the presentation, there are strategic opportunities to ask your questions or questions. So, I can move up which of these two?
Um, great. I'm so happy to be here. My name is Nolches. I'm Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer. I'm pleased to be here to provide this year's annual update to you. I'd like to start by sharing my gratitude for Dr. Mark Schaefer, who had the vision and belief in creating an equity leadership position here in Thompson School District. Equity in TSD means that we believe that each child will succeed at high levels and that their success will not be predictable or dependent on their ethnicity, race, program placement, or zip code. I want to start with the, these next four slides around, you can see the bolded text in each of them that highlight the direct connections between equity, diversity, and inclusion and desired, the specific desired outcomes in our strategic plan, STRIDE 2025. We started with one point one, which is about eliminating disparities in our student outcomes. And in in focus area two, we really continue talking about ensuring inclusive and positive cultures and climates by providing staff with culturally responsive instructional and behavioral strategies to meet the needs of our diverse and unique students, to ensure family, students, and community are able to share their experiences with us, supporting welcoming, safe, and inclusive district facilities, and generally enacting the educational equity policy, ADV, which is two point five that we asked. Um, next in human talent, we're, we are also focused on the human talent in TSD and that which we hire certainly. And in our fourth focus area, we believe in ensuring that when we seek and listen to students' needs as described by their families, our community members, or our students themselves, we align our resources with those stated needs. Dr. Schaefer has led with equity in mind. He has taught the system to use equity centered language, moving us from thinking and talking about all students as an aggregate group to ensure that each day, each staff member is focused on each and every child we serve. We're continuing with this effort to ensure that each child in TSD gets the very best education possible. So, now, we have about twenty five minutes left for this update, I think,ish. I was going to set my timer for sixty minutes, but I.
We got a late start.
So, buckle up. I'm most interested in this evening, getting your constituents and your perspectives on each of these areas listed here in the agenda. As you have seen in the board memo and the board packet, there are slides set aside for gathering feedback in each area. So, let's dig in. First, I'd like to share updates and celebrations of the work of our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department, also known as the EDI Department, for this school year. These pictures bring us joy at the end of a very long school year. In EDI, we are student, staff, family, and community focused. In the top left here in the pictures, you can see we supported unified basketball games by buying pizzas as incentives to pack the stands to ensure support for our unified teams. Here you see some of our local first responders working hard to beat the MBHS unified team. In the center left, EDI hosted a booth at Heart and Soul's Latin A Heritage Month Celebration and were able to gather feedback about EDI from students and families. We'll touch on that a little bit more. At the bottom left, Martha King Art, Music, and Writing Contest winners were recognized at Heart and Soul's Loveland Dr. MLK Junior Community Celebration. Here in the top middle, it has where the logo is, you can see underneath it names. Our renowned artist, the state's renowned artist, Tony Ortega's Pastel Workshop, was held with elementary and middle school students over two days in partnership with our Gifted Education Department and the Beat Education Center and Loveland Museum colleagues. In response to student data, sharing the desire to have places and spaces of belonging last school year that I I mentioned to you last June, EDI hosted two student conferences focused on belonging. At the top right of this picture collage, you can see that in collaboration with federal and state programs, Director Jesse Teherina, EDI's High School Belonging Conference kicked off our year in September with Thomas Valles, a cross country runner who the Disney movie McFarland was made about. He was our keynote speaker and deeply inspired our students. In the bottom middle right, our Spring Middle School Belonging Conference for eighth graders was held with special sessions by book authors from around Colorado and high school transition sessions led by each of our high schools. This is some of the data that our EDI TOSA, Andrew Dutch, who's here tonight, guarded from students. You can see on the left for our, from our high school conference and then from May, our eighth grade belonging conference as well. One of the things I thought was really important is to know, you know, do students feel like this was worthwhile? Do they recommend that we gather and have a conversation about belonging and creating those spaces? You can see what that data looks like there on the slide. In the next two slides, I want to share with you some of the eighth grade student voices that are captured in word clouds. The higher frequency of the words mentioned the larger facial and the word cloud, as you likely know. So, on this first slide, in partnership with the Limerick County Department of Health and Environment, Dominique Kane and some of her colleagues created a conversation starter project called United in Values. They joined our conference and led restorative community building circles at the middle school conference in May. And the data in this slide and the following slide demonstrate our students' responses. What does creating spaces where everyone feels they belong mean to you? Eighth grade, eighth graders stated that it means including others. That's the one. They believe in inclusion. They want inclusion. They are requesting inclusive spaces. This is a direct tie to our strategic plan, pillar two, including and supporting culture. In the next slide, they offer more of the how. Again, our partners at Limerick County Department of Health and Environment shared this second question. What does belonging feel like to you and what role do others play in fostering that feeling? These eighth grade participants from all middle school and charter school shared, it's a vibe. Good hearted vibes allow us to feel comfortable, accepted, like you can be yourself and express yourself without judgment and be supported and valued. And they say they can do this when others are not being racist. They are defining what being inclusive is. In the next slide, I want to share just a couple of additional celebrations and and I did see the request for information ahead of time. So, I have added things accordingly. But first, I want to start with some of the core work that we've been doing. And where you see these parentheses here, these are, this work is directly tied to our, the desired outcomes in our strategic plan. That is how we have done equity, diversity, inclusion work here. You can see that on our website. All things we do lead back to our strategic plan. So, first, Tiffany Jones, Director of Curriculum and Learning Design, Laslow Hunt, Director of Special Education, Jesse Teherina, Director of State and Federal Programs, and Sarah Rassison, then Executive Director of Elementary Education, now our interim Assistant of Learning Services. Were part of the small team that I led to develop TSD's next instructional framework. That includes expected educational strategies that. That includes expected educational strategies that will allow us to reach each child, such as intentional instructional planning with each child in mind, scaffolding, and differentiation. Second, professional learning this year has included leading to a book study for learning services directors. Protocols we can use to engage in courageous conversations about disparities in student outcomes, one point one. And E C twelve meetings, our early childhood through twelfth grade administrative meetings, I have facilitated, facilitated learning about our culture and climate focus, and each school has had a continuous improvement team where I have co-taught with Dr. Guthrie, on culturally responsive and restorative practices such as warm welcomes and classroom agreements, and have led uh Color- one of Colorado Department of Education, our approved English learner P D pathway class to support educators in getting their designation attached to their C D E licensure. And I don't know if you all have seen that before, so I brought my own so that you would get to push your eyes on what it looks like when we, when a district has a C D E approved um licensure program, it's forty-five hours, and then it shows up there on the bottom of your um license when you go through the licensure and you need those requirements. So just thought that might be interesting for you. Um, so three, our new teacher on special assignment, as I mentioned, in E D I, Andrew Dutch, assisted in garnering um fa- family and student data about E D I and T S D. Um, we noted that as one of the goals that you had for Dr. Schaefer and wanted to partner around that. Um, so what we started with was um in, at the Latin A Heritage Month event, we had a hundred and three survey respondents at that event, forty-two students and sixty-one parents guardians. Um, they gave us information about two different areas. One was perceptions of Thompson School District's efforts in E D I, and second, recommendations about the direction of E D I where it's headed in T S D. So students and teachers responded positively about their perceptions of staff support for students, their perceptions of respect for diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds, and their perceptions of treatment of students who speak languages other than English. The fourth part of their perception data there was around students' um belief that they will graduate in four years. And this was lower than that of the parents and guardians, I mean, there was a mismatch there in what students said and what parents guardians said. The second area related to recommendations, staff play, um this is what they said, several different things. Staff play an integral part in creating an inclusive and supportive learning environment. Um, secondly, parents and students express the need for multilingual speakers in all schools and more bilingual programs. And third, um specifically quoted from the data of a parent, they request for bullying and sexual harassment to end in schools. So with that, that's a lot of information, but based, um I know that you all have strong connections and get ongoing feedback from your constituents in your, in your district area. So based on your engagement and communication with our community, what questions do you have about this year's E D I celebrations that you have had time to read, some ask questions about already, and otherwise at this time about the work of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department?
It's my turn to go first, and I guess I would say that I think wanting to know that um are we seeing the transfer of it actually being automatic in schools now versus um someone having to point it out to schools? Well, that's not really, does that make sense?
What's the that or the this, like pointing whatever?
Are they using, are, are, are you seeing the natural belief and heartfelt D E I in classrooms versus somebody having to stop and say, this is your D E I point, or is it, are, is it happening? Is what I guess I'm asking.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for questioning.
Yeah.
Um, this, we have been very intentional both ends um about training and giving our teams, particularly through continuous improvement teams, and each building has a team,
Mm-hmm.
and giving them direct instruction
Okay.
about what it is we're asking for, when we talk about something like a warm welcome,
Mm-hmm.
classroom agreements, and how, how those, the ways that we engage with individuals even around this table looks indifferent
Indeed.
based on, you know, all the different parts of who we are, all our different identities.
Okay. Right.
And so we, we are at the point, this was our first year of actually doing direct instruction around culturally responsive practices.
Okay.
We've done lots of things up to this point to prepare the system, get the infrastructure, have policy, get all those things, but this, so this, this is the first year, and now that we go in, and we're starting to see people feel that, and
Starts singing happy now. Yeah, okay. Okay.
and our family, our families and community and students are still giving us the feedback that we asked for last six years, so we're, we're in it now.
Yeah. That was my question.
Thanks.
Denise?
Okay, I have a two-part question. How many of our staff have moved to that certification level on their licensure?
For the English learner P D pathway? That would be a question for the P D department, um, but I'll certainly get that from Haley Garen and then go back to you.
And then the second part of my question is around, you know, our classified and administrative staff, um, you know, certainly need to be culturally responsive and all of the things you're talking about. Is there something similar um for them that could be on a batch or um, you know, in their, I don't think, I don't know if there's an equivalent to a licensure, but and how can they, for classified?
For classified staff members? Um, so what's offered, what I'm referencing what's offered through Colorado Department of Education is for, was it actually just for license and now E P T, uh administrative professional technical, like this is a principal license, can now add it? So I, I'm, you know, I was asking for that, you know, some years ago, but so maybe classified is next at the state level.
Okay. So, so within Thompson. Yeah. So within Thompson, what are we doing um to make sure that all of our bus drivers and parents and everyone that we heard about earlier are, you know, have a standard of, of conduct and understand it?
Yeah. We offer, out of the E D I department, we offer um trainings at each of the classified training days. Um, Andrew Dutch took that over this year, and um so it's an offering, and I, and I know that other cabinet members in the room um have been in those conversations, so I think it's, you know, hopefully something we move towards.
Thank you.
A lot of what we're doing is also um really talking about equity through this sense of belonging and understanding um a student, um talking with that student and having some different strategies. And I know um we've been talking about the professional learning that will be coming up at the start of the school year. And um, and I've also talked to Dr. Schaefer about this in our I L T, and really making sure that we are replicating some of the pieces we did for belonging, um like warm welcomes and teaching our bus drivers what that means and how you can do it in a culturally appropriate way. So we really want to um target some of those right off at the beginning of the year so we can go to different groups um and share, share our learning with them as well too.
Super, thank you.
Alexandra? Stu?
Yes, um, a question about number three and also a question about number four, and these are the, the two that I submitted in the R F I. I would be interested in seeing the results of the student and family surveys. I'd, I'd be interested to know what the questions were that were asked and a breakdown of what answers were given, and then also what emerged from the listening session, what topics were discussed, um maybe just a collection of some of the comments that were made. So I would be interested in just seeing some of the, the data regarding the surveys and the listening sessions, or listening session that you had. And then regarding number four, um partnering with cabinet members on the Equity Implementation Plan, can you provide, and you don't have to do that right now, Maria, but can you provide um information about uh what that implementation plan progress looks like? You know, you talk about enacting the educational equity policy, so what are some of the things that have emerged that would be considered progress in regard to the enactment of it? It's been in place now for three or four years, I think, was when we first adopted the, the equity policy. So I guess I'm just interested in progress and people's buy-in and where we are and if there's a plan for doing things, so. Look, yeah, tho- those were the two questions that I had, and that was the kind of information or data that I was hoping to get.
Um, so.
Can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, so that I actually will be part of the presentation on Equity Implementation Strategies and Progress in this presentation, so you'll get an update on that tonight.
This is the celebrations part, and then we have the u- update and, and two more sessions.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can respond if, because I'm not.
Oh, if, if it's already part of another part of the presentation, it's coming, okay.
It's fun, it's.
Yeah, you're just teeing it up.
Uh-huh. Well, good for me, but I'm teeing it up, I didn't realize that.
We just need a, I think, like the. Wait, oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Which one, which person is going, yeah, Dawn to speak?
Um, um, so as far as the celebrations, the, the one thing that came to my mind when I was reading this that um I think is, it kind of encapsli- encapsulates everything, um is the fact that Laramie County is the only county in the entire country that has had a reduced suicide rate. Um, and the work that has been done um collaboratively and to, to this inclusion and valuing and sense of belonging and, uh, and so many other components, right? It, it just, like, that's one of those goals that you usually don't see move the way that it has, and I think that, uh, well, actually, I know that T S D's educational and equity policy was cited as one of the reasons that went all the way into the federal, the federal level for a, a reason why that happened.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and being a shining example of, of how we're moving the things that save lives, like the work that, that shows up here, so just want to shout that out.
Thank you. Nancy?
Um, so on page eleven, you know, the heart with all the words and stuff. So my question on that is, I really like everything that it says in here, but my question is, as we're teaching these kids, you know, about belonging and, and what it feels like, um, once they leave um Mountain View High School or Loveland High School, they're, they're gonna go beyond the walls here. So I guess I would be curious, or I would like to see us make sure that we're including, like, how do you still feel wonderful and belonging and the good vibes even when you're in a room that um may not be reflecting that back to you? You, you still stay centered, because I think, I think this work is good, but I think it's also good to make sure that they know how to still feel that when they're in a, uh, whatever, work environment or who knows what, and still feel that way and not take on what other people, I think that's an important skill. I don't know if you guys are looking at that or thought about that, but.
I think that's just probably with our social, emotional learning, and all of the work that's happened around that for years is, you know, trying to make sure you, you can self-regulate, you can, you know, have some affirming beliefs about yourself, et cetera. Um, and we know from our community and the data that E D I has looked at um across the county that all of our community partners, nonprofits, and school districts are stating that because of where um things are at, um, not really post-COVID, but you know, kind of post-COVID, and that people are feeling that, that high level of loneliness, they don't have, they're not connected, they're not um feeling like they have sense of belonging, so we're, we're addressing that on, on all the slides right now, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we all have, no, Amy, I'm sorry.
Thanks. And so I apologize, students, I think I didn't read the part that I did have planned for you, so, and so somebody tell me if you ever heard this, because that's what I was asking. But um, so in response to your question about the listening session, um in collaboration with Dr. Schaefer, um I did attend um a listening ses- session in fall twenty twenty-four with Spanish-speaking parents. Have I said, did you hear this at all? No, okay, so that's my bad, it's my bad time. Um, so the two topics that were brought up by parents that were discussed with Dr. Schaefer included, one, there's an equity and access concern when T S D schools, as a parent said, are old, the schools that are old continue to be old, and the students who can ac- who can access the new schools receive all the benefits of new buildings, air conditioning, technology upgrades, material, outdoor players, et cetera. Um, a second um issue that a family member raised, uh, concerns about bus drivers and requested that drivers be evaluated for substance, substance use and psychological needs every six months, especially drivers with young children on their route, since they would be less aware if they were concerned as compared to their older peers. So those were the two big topics that came up at that listening session, um, that, uh, Dr. Schaefer and some of the cabinet members and a couple of board members were there as well.
Yeah, I just, we just said it, it's like, oh, that was a long of it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly, so. Um, and then for four, your question on number four, the strategies until deliverables achieved as part of the Equity Implementation Plan this year will be shared as the third part of this presentation. Um, and then for area five, um, there's so many of the things that we've been doing, including sending teachers to professional development, et cetera, really are the, what's the work and support specifically for students is around creating welcoming, safe, and inclusive facilities. So that's that section of the report. I have two more, so. Um, this next one is really short, I really just wanted to be able to give you an update on the educational um equity in T S D. One is just that people know that, that on our website, under the about pages where we have multiple pieces that people in our community, including you, can, can get the information about our educational equity framework, the historical timeline, district interactive data charts that demonstrate inequities in our student outcomes, and previous educational equity update board presentations that are also in board docs, but sometimes we have to dig, and I'm not sure where to dig for those, so they're all there thanks to Matt Beal and from our communications department. The one change that we made in this next slide, one improvement to our educational equity framework this year um includes that we added, we changed some language here, so in the one, the, the one of the five equity moves that is circled there on the slide, previously stated multilabel communication, and it was changed this year to inclusive multilabel communication and digital accessibility to align with our responsibility under law, uh, not just to, um, for us to communicate in the home language of our families, but also the second part of that is to ensure that we're in compliance with um laws, the new law that passed um related to disabilities of, of our community with disabilities. That's referenced in the Thompson School District Digital Accessibility Transition Plan, um, also led by Matt Beal. So that was a new um one change, so I don't know how you want to leave that part, Barb, maybe it's thumbs up, thumbs down, but based on your engagement and communication with our community, do you have any questions about that, that change that you see there in the framework?
Yeah, totally makes sense, yeah.
Great, thanks, and we'll continue to, I'll be continuing to work with Matt Beal around um building that out hopefully in terms of um the Equity Implementation Plan and how we increase that, the efforts to meet the needs of our um families around accessibility. So, the final area I want to review is in regards to the Equity Implementation Plan. So there are five different areas in the next slide, um, that, just as a reminder, so the five different equity move areas are here, so each of the um five areas have its own focus area. And we'll start with the next slide with focus area one. The data we have, has been presented to you on the last two years with um, with um cab- by cabinet members here, um, this year I'm just going to share with you um in terms of uh each of the focus areas. So the first one being focus area one, inclusive family guardian and community input, you can see here um what the strategy was. Um, you can read it there in the bold at the top there. And then what's underneath, what's listed there is what was the deliverable that the cabinet members committed to in terms of really saying, okay, here's our strategy and here's what we're gonna have done by the end of the year. A number of these um options are the things that you're gonna see as deliverables are actually a training. Um, because part of what, somebody asked that earlier, I think, Barb, you asked that earlier, is that. Um, because part of what, somebody asked that earlier, I think, Barbara, you asked that earlier, is that we can, we can build great tools or we can do, you know, um. But we build great tools and the next piece is we gotta train people in it before we can hold folks accountable, right? Um, or expect implementation. So this one, um, a hundred percent of classified and certified staff will be offered two training options designed for implementing high-impact strategies. Uh, strategic practices associated with family and community partnerships. And these two courses were actually offered as part of the, um, supposing that was held last week at Mountain View High School over the three days' time. Focus area two, our second, um, area, again, is inclusive, multi-level communication and digital accessibility. The strategy was develop district-wide accessible technology guidelines and protocols, including recommended tools for multi-level communication. Um, two of our cabinet members, Kelly Sein and Mike Hausman, um, as well as our director of state and federal programs, Jesse Deherina. All were working on, um, two different pilots. Um, so you can see that the pilot for instant language assistant, I L A, um, was piloted last year. And was implemented this school year, this, this school year for youth in Title I schools. And then, um, Kelly and Mike worked really hard this year to do a pilot with Pocket Talk and selected that as the tool that they wanted to ensure that it basically gives, uh, like, I don't know. It's kind of like a, you know, cell phone size and you, and their plan is to get, purchase one for each of the schools and all of the district offices. Um, which really addressed that parent note that we talked about earlier. They, they all, they want to be able to communicate with somebody when you walk in the front office and not have to, you know, buzz someone down or. Um, call me and have me run down to the front of the room. So, so that is where they're at and they've been working very, very hard at that. Um, the third bullet there talks about the processes and protocols, protocols for district staff to communicate with multi-level families. Um, Andrew Dutch and the E D I department worked, uh, really hard with, um, Fabiola Blazek, uh, who's in the communications department. To get those forms updated and current so that our staff are able to know how to request an interpreter at the district level and our translator. Um, focus area three on the next slide is about culturally competent and diverse staff. The strategy was to offer online training to all staff to meet the needs of diverse learners, colleagues, families and communities we serve. Um, our, um, assistant superintendent of, um, H R worked, um, over the past year, if you recall, he, he did some researching to find. Which online training modules we could put in place through public school works. And so this year both of those were implemented. And you can see the percentage of staff who've completed both of those trainings and that that was as of May first, twenty twenty five. So that, those are the deliverables in regards to that area, focus area. And then the fourth, not the final, but the fourth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, focus area is professional learning for equity. The strategy is to train schools, continuous improvement teams, which I mentioned earlier. Small teams at each building that include their leadership. Um, we've talked about this a couple of years ago. Some of you were part of one of the teams that said. You really believed in restorative practices being part of, um, very specific direct training. And so we brought that back this year and said, this is something. Um, our community has been asking for specifically to address, um, concerns that we have around behavior system-wide. So the first one in the continuous improvement teams, the deliverable was that a hundred percent of schools participated in learning how to implement culturally responsive classroom agreements and warm welcomes. And we saw some really great data outcomes, um, in, from the PanRav data about the implementation there. And then the second strategy was to implement restorative solutions training for staff who have student contact but were not part of those teams. And the deliverable there was eighty, eighty-four percent of our schools offered, had a, I think all schools have an in-house trainer in restorative solutions. Eighty-four percent of our schools offer those trainings this school year. Um, the other ones have been scheduled for August when staff come back. So we're really excited about that. Um, implementation. And then focus area five, equitable resource allocation. Um, you know, much kudos and gratitude to our new, um. Bob Eversole who jumped in at the time that he did and I said, hey, your name's on this. And, uh. And he did a great job of just, of, of naming it here that the strategy was about identifying factors to equitably budget for instructional and non-instructural needs at school sites. And so he, um, has come in with a heart for kids, for our students, for meeting student needs. And so this, um, the budget process would change so that staffing needs were reviewed on a site-by-site basis, um, considering the needs of students and staff at each site. And, um, so the first, this is for the first time, the budget review included, um, the individuals, um, such as Sarah Rasslinson. Oh, you see it up here. So individuals, um, who are in direct support of our schools from learning services. So that was a, a huge, uh, shift for our system and, um, while also being inclusive of traditional finance and human resources department staff. But to have the folks who are in learning services, who are responsible for habits in schools in that, um, to that level and know what things are happening, they were engaged. So thank you.
Were you, can I pause you just for one second? This is great. Andy, I know you were on that. Can you share just briefly your experience on being on that budget review process?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so what we did was we kind of looked at some of the things that, um, were done in the past. So first we learned how things were allocated previously. And then, um. We really looked at, you know, with tight budgets and with loss of staff, we knew at that time, loss of students, that, um. We were gonna have to make really prioritized decisions on, um, the gotta haves and the wanna haves. So we really had a discussion about that and what priorities were. Um, for my lens, um, I'm sort of a, a. Taskmaster when it comes to supplanting and, um, ensuring that all of our, some of our funding, grant funding is really, there's a lot of rules and guidance attached. So, um, we were able to look at that, ensuring that we weren't supplanting, um, and that we had resources that were general funded based on needs. And then over the top comes the title funds for the title schools. Um, and I think moving forward, um. Especially with, uh, Bob at the helm and when we're looking at, um, when our, our data comes out with our school performance frameworks and things. We want to get to a place of using some of our dollars, um, that we have for at-risk, um, and be able to be a little more responsive. To the needs once we get some of our fresh data back, which doesn't come until later. But it was a, it was a, a great process. Um, I always appreciate, um, having the partnership I have with, um, Theo and Sarah who are front-facing with principals and then myself. And then the team to say really what do our schools need in an equitable lens.
Thanks. Um, so with that, again, just thinking about, um, your constituents and what you've heard, what you believe. This is like my one time a year to find out from the school board who kind of makes or breaks the, the movement around equity, diversity and inclusion. Um, what suggestions do you have for further strategies to implement equity across our educational system for the coming school year? And or other things related. Alexandra, you wanna go first?
Yeah.
She did the last one. Didn't we?
I think it's Denise. It was you did the last one. You did. Yeah.
The other one was so short. The other one was, yeah, one slide. So we didn't.
Yeah, that didn't count.
Okay, sorry.
Um. I don't have anything for you right now.
Okay, Alexandra.
I think I like, I like this part, like sort of what you're doing and as far as the, um, you know, doing some of the trainings and the things like that. And I think that that's good. Um, I think continuing with, you know, sort of like you're doing, putting, putting it into action, making it, um, you know, actualized across, across the district is great. Um, and the, um, I mean, definitely the accessibility stuff, the communication thing I think is cool. And it's nice that we have, you know, now sort of the technology available to make, make that easy. Um, to do, which I think is great. Um, so looking at that, um, I think that's probably all I have to say at this particular moment.
Stu.
I suspect that the various things that you've been doing, that, that you've reviewed for us tonight must be working. Because I can't remember the last time that I've, that I've received, uh, an email from a member of the community expressing concern. About what the district was doing, um, regarding equity. And so I, um, choose to interpret that, that. Some of the concerns that were present before, um, answers must have been given. Um, or they have just accepted what the district is doing and we're moving on. So it looks like you have a robust and very complete variety of activities and strategies and so on. So I, I guess. It's not a question. It would be a, just a suggestion. You should keep on keeping on and as new, new ideas present themselves, try them out. But I did wanna share with you that it's been, I think probably a couple of years since I've received an email that was critical of the work that we were doing in this particular area.
Don.
Um, you know, I was struck by one of your slides earlier about how often. It comes up about how important it is for all and each and how they both are important for different things. And so, um, I would say that that kind of bubbled up for me as probably one of the things for us to really hone in on. Is that we keep getting feedback from, from our community that says, well, all people should know this. All people should have. You know, should, should be a part of this to feel included and to understand bullying and, you know, like there were, there's messages around, like, when people notice. Um, who's not there and how important that is. And I think, um, there are definitely some opportunities for that. I would, communication, you know, like really helping people, um, at least know more about what is going on in these moves. I think is, is always a challenge. And so that strikes me as an opportunity, um, for us to, to just share the stories as a one way for people to be included and to be involved. Um, and then also all of the things about including everybody have to also be balanced with the fact that people are eager for affinity groups. To be able to say, this is important to me. This is a challenge. This is something that I need to be heard because this matters to me. Um, and I think that. That, that teeter totter is really important, just to be able to do both really well is, um. Coming up still always probably for the people who are giving us feedback, how important it is that we are doing equity well for, in the places where we need it, right? Um, earlier tonight it came up with us talking about the A D A assessment as just one example of that. And how really like, there is an important equity lens to that besides compliance, right? Like, I would love it if we thought about A D A as an example, as something we did well because we really want to make things accessible to everybody. And not because we have to. And a lot of people aren't there. And so that's a place where all. Could be really helpful for us is to understand why something matters and why we would be compassionate about that. But then we know that there are people who wanna be able to come together and talk about their unique needs and get and allow us to be better at something because it matters for the equitable people in that way.
Thank you. Thanks. Nancy?
Um, I had three things, but I lost one. So, um, the first thing is, no need to discuss it, but I just noticed that you had, um. Title nine twenty, twenty twenty four training in there, but that's no longer in effect. It's rolled, been rolled back to the twenty twenty rules. So I don't know if you mean the twenty twenty four rules or if you just mean it happened in twenty twenty four. Okay.
Yes, we never adopted the twenty twenty four regulations and so we are fully trained in both U O S R.
Okay. Right.
And so, no, it was the twenty twenty training, but it happened in twenty twenty four.
And then on the equitable, uh, budgeting equitably, this is something that I have brought up many times because I think, and I talked with Sarah about it. Is that I know that we have these allocation formulas for, you know, number of students and all this stuff. But when we know that a particular student has a cohort of third graders who are like two grades behind in reading. That, that the next year for fourth grade, maybe the normal allocation for I L C reading interventions is X. But because, but we know, we know we have this, that we should accommodate that because if you don't, then I don't think we are being equitable to those kids. Because we're giving them the same level of staff that other schools have, but it's not, it's not what they need. They need a higher level. Now, maybe, you know, Bob can work some budget magic over there. We can, you know. Um, so, and I had something else. I don't remember what it was. So I'm sorry.
Amy? My question was asked. Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Are you all done?
Appreciate it.
Well.
I think there's thirty more, like. Minutes of content.
Okay.
You find this information to hear about next steps.
Andy?
Could you?
We'll read it.
Yes. Yeah, questions, you, I know you'll find me. So thank you.
Yeah, I can. Always. All right, thank you. I'm gonna suggest that everybody stand up and twirl around or something two or three times while these other people come up.
Thank you.
Because I can't hardly sit anymore. We are ready for five point four graduation requirements.
Mark, thank you for the break. That was necessary.
Sarah Rasslinson, interim assistant superintendent of learning services, this evening, um, Andy and Tiffany are here. And they will be presenting on the graduation guidelines update. Um, and these are, this comes from our board policy I K F. Good evening, Madam President. Schaefer members of the board, Tiffany Jones, and I am presenting with Andy Stevens. I've told Andy we have six minutes.
I'll do my best.
So we are here to follow up on when we last met at Centennial, you all had a lot of questions around that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we were diving into that for you. So, um, right here, we've got our strike twenty twenty connection. And after we met, we wanted to, um, really dive into I K F. We wanted to go into those graduation requirements. We also know that as we were meeting, we had questions around that and we wanted to see if the I K F was really meeting the needs of our students. Um, first and foremost, that's our, our target, um, audience. And so we've had a lot of fun actually over the twenty four, twenty five school year. Reviewing the I K F with, um, teacher leaders. And so we put together a group, we call them the E C twelve leaders, they're content specialists or content, um, teacher leaders in our district. They had to apply, um, and we met monthly. And so we wanted to put that group together to see from a teacher lens as well. Um, what potential recommendations, if any, to the board would they give us for I K F? So we put this group together and we put together our timeline for you all to see what work we've done based on your, um, questions and thoughts the last time we met. So we have, in September, we met and really built that why, why are we having this group of leaders come together? Why are we here discussing I K F? We reviewed I K F in its full entirety because there's a lot more than just credits to I K F. And so we gave this group homework, which they loved. Um, and so part of their homework was soliciting feedback from their colleagues around what did they appreciate about I K F? And then what questions did they have around I K F and what possible changes would other stakeholders have? We came back in November and reviewed all of that feedback from their stakeholders or their colleagues and their peers and their students. Um, and then we also dug into surrounding districts' I K F policies to see what was different and what was same, um, when compared to ours. We gave them December off. Um, so we came back in January and we drafted potential I K F. So we came back in January and we drafted potential I K F provisions. And so we told them to think big and there are no restrictions, not staffing, not, um, you know, any constraints. And so we also asked them to have homework again and we asked them to ask for other stakeholder feedback outside of their buildings. So not their peers, not their colleagues, ask their neighbor, ask, um, you know, their social group. What other kind of pieces are out there outside of our four walls? We came back in February and we continued those potential guidelines. And then we also, Andy and I were fortunate enough to meet with all of our high school advisory groups from each of our five schools, um, in hearing the student feedback and then we shared that feedback with our group saying, here are the themes that we heard from our students. And then our E C twelve group, um, really leaned into those themes and then they finalized their proposed drafts to I K F.
So, uh, as we think about that work that E C twelve did over the course of the academic year, um, there were lots of highlights that came out of that work. First and foremost, our I K F makes graduation very attainable for our students. Um, and our, um, feedback was that there's a lot of different opportunities for students to explore areas of interest, whether that be C T E electives or art or health, um, you know, P E and fitness, all of those things. Um, overwhelmingly, we're in, um, support of the community service expectation. We thought that maybe would be a, a bigger hot button topic and, and the reality was overwhelming support. And then also that there are options for, again, every student, not just your college bound, uh, you know, four-year track student, that we have lots of options so that, uh, every student in the district can attain, um, their, their high school diploma. Um, so, uh, as we think about some considerations as we move forward, what are the amounts of credits, credits that students are going to need to graduate? How do we tackle the rising problem of if students take a maximum load of courses in their first two years of high school, they essentially are, uh, ready to be done at the end of their junior year? And we are noticing an increasing number of students that are exploring that opportunity. Uh, and so how do we create opportunities to keep our students engaged in our system? Um, some of the other things we heard, the world language is a barrier for some students that especially when they were looking at the different tiers of credit, that it, you know, they needed two credits of world language to get to the twenty four credit diploma, but they didn't want to take that second year, so they're like, I'll just take the twenty credit, it's fine. Uh, and so figuring out, how do we tackle that barrier, uh, as, as we move forward?
Can I pause you just a second?
Yes.
Just please remember though, when we go from twenty, even though they're missing one credit, we don't have a twenty-three option. So it differs back to that twenty and so I just want to make sure we're really clear. We have a lot of students that are right there on that cusp, but it differs, it brings them back down.
Because they can't do the second year.
Yes.
Yeah. I, that, I'm just really glad for the explanation because I was like, why would world language be a barrier? But that.
And then lastly, something else we heard time and time again was, how, how am I going to leave the walls of my school ready for life? You know, how do we apply for loans and manage debt and rent and all of those financial literacy concepts, which I'm thankful to report now are in the law as a graduation report, um, which we'll talk more about here in a moment. Uh, so as Tiffany mentioned, we met with all five high school student advisory groups, um, at, at each of our five high schools. There was confusion, um, one of the, the, you know, themes throughout each of our conversations was students were confused about which classes fit in which bucket. And so they would enroll for a class and they would think, oh, that's gonna be my fitness credit. And then they'd take it, they'd pass, they'd look at their transcript and because it didn't have fitness in the title, it was actually a health class or it filled a different bucket. So, looking at how we might be able to streamline some of those categories, um, again, not necessarily reduction in credit, but just streamlining buckets. Um, students absolutely want to have classes suggested by the people who know them best, their teachers. Um, and so trying to maybe build a system there. And then students, um, it was interesting, each student group, you could tell was very passionate about their school, uh, which we appreciated. Um, but at some of our schools, you know, they were disappointed that our, our twenty eight credit diploma, uh, had sunset and had went away. At some of our other schools, they were looking for sixteen and eighteen credit options, uh, because of their circumstances. So, again, it's about striking balance, uh, but we were, uh, again, really thrilled to meet with all of our students and hear uh, from those groups what their feedback was. Okay, um, just a couple of updates that, that do apply to, uh, graduation. Uh, in December, the State Board of Ed approved new I C A P rules, uh, for all of our students, uh, nine through twelve. So, uh, I was tasked with creating a task force for the district to help us kind of figure out what I C A P in the Thompson School District is going to look like moving forward. Um, one of the big pieces in the new, uh, rules around I C A P is, um, when we have students that are earning credit in what we call hybrid modalities, so if they're earning credit through, uh, hybrid learning, so they're in class part-time and online part-time, if they're all online, if they're using work-based learning for credit, the new rules in I C A P state that they must have a completed I C A P that documents their goals related to that hybrid learning environment. And if they do not, then that student will be funded at a part-time status level. And obviously, we can't have that happening. So, um, that was all part of the work we did. And then ultimately, I, I tasked the task force with creating the what. Um, I wanted buildings to have autonomy around the how, but really creating a standardized scope and sequence for the, for the district. So, um, that's just a little bit about I C A P and, and kind of where we're going. And then our next steps. So obviously, um, Stu, we saw your R F I about the, the new H B, uh, twenty five eleven ninety-two, which is the P F L law. And, uh, absolutely will be continuing to work with that E C twelve group to figure out how to best implement those new, um, regulations to ensure that our students are getting the, the P F L standards that are outlined by C D E in the most comprehensive and thoroughly possible.
Can you, so P F, personal finance?
Yeah, sorry, personal financial literacy, uh, alphabet, student public education. Um, and then also again, just continuing to have dialogue, uh, with you guys about what it is that you want to see, uh, other ideas, other opportunities, uh, that, that we may be able to incorporate into I K F. And so that's kind of what we're thinking for next step.
Good start.
Questions?
Um, I think this is truly Alexander's chance to start first.
It is now.
Sorry.
You said on April twenty ninth, you finalized proposed drafts of potential I K F updates? Is that something we could see or hear about, what those drafts are?
Uh-uh, it's a secret.
Well, it seems to be.
We weren't sure if that's really what you guys were after and so we would love to provide you with their three draft options. Um, they look very similar and all three are very different. Um, and so we'd be happy to come back and share those or share them through.
Robert Chen.
Sarah or what?
Yeah, great.
Okay. Good, let's do that.
Stu.
Um, H B twenty five eleven ninety-two, I, I know what it con, what it includes. I don't remember by what year, by what date that, of course, had to be in place and students had to be taking it. Can you tell me that?
I can, so it's really crazy to be thinking about the class of twenty thirty, but that is, that is the class. So that is next year's eighth grade class.
All right.
So they are the class of twenty thirty. And so the law stipulates that by the time that class receives their diploma, they will have met the standards that are outlined in, in the law.
And I think part of the law says that the course has to be available to them beginning in ninth grade.
Correct.
They don't have to complete it until they graduate, so we have what, a, a year?
An academic year.
An academic year to get this thing off the grid.
Which that's typical, C D U typically will put something out, give you a year to really, you know, research and refine and kind of put that in place because we would never want to do something for students right now without a defined plan. So we will build the plan while they're in eighth grade for when they start ninth grade is when that plan is ready to go. So really then they've got a four-year kind of window to.
But a year really isn't very long.
No.
I mean, certainly you can get work done during that time and that's why I, uh, told you in, in case you didn't know, because you may not have been in the district or be familiar with what was going on in the district in the late nineties and the early two thousands, to know that the course actually was in place, it was required for graduation. And so hopefully that might save you some time and the energy to at least have a, have a prototype to look at.
And I think we've heard this loud and clear from students in our community, that kids need this, um, and they want this. And so I'm not sure actually we'll take a year, we've had a lot of conversation.
Uh-huh.
Um, the beauty is we're right now in that I C A P world and, you know, personal financial literacy, how do we bring them together possibly?
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's, we're really excited about taking that, um, to present in front of you all again.
Yep.
And I think I heard that, uh, Bob and Zach were gonna personally teach each of the subjects.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. Someone will get on.
Future born numbers. It'll be my daughter, the class of twenty thirty, so.
But there is an interest, I mean, people are very excited about this, so.
Yeah, good.
Done?
Um, so I'm thinking back to when we had some students who presented to us. One of the recommendations that came up from them that keeps sticking with me is, um, how sometimes that C T E commitment's just too big of a bite. And so I'm hoping that whatever gets presented to us, if it does incorporate that idea of, um, in high school making C T E classes available that aren't pathways, right, okay. And then while we were sitting here, I, because obviously financial literacy is happening, the other thing is, is that there's a lot of other ways that people don't know how to adult, that I'd like for us to think about. Um, maybe not with the same deadline, but the next thing that I have in mind is that people don't know that you should go get your tape taken care of or, wait, how to make a doctor's appointment or all sorts of other things that I think are all part of that as well. And so I love the idea that we would maybe take that on as the, uh, uh, too, like how do we help students with that extra time they told us many of them have in their senior year? With like, you're really ready to launch, you know, that you really feel good walking out that door, that yeah, like I could adult, I could do this and I'm not surprised by it, so, okay. Nancy?
Um, I bet, we, we have to carry up, does me, my battery is really bad. So on the financial literacy, um, I think it's really good and I know that tomorrow, I believe the NOCO Financial Sector Partnership is having a meeting.
They are.
And so I think that's a really good opportunity where we're gonna, you, you, um, you are gonna be able to take that requirement and match it up to this financial sector partnership. They get interns, we get, you know, the training and the program.
Yeah.
And so I think that's a really good win. And I think I, you look, I think I brought this up before, so to you guys, haven't I?
What? I, Nancy, I would just say I'm on the Education Subcommittee for the, for the NOCO Finance.
Yeah, I knew that.
And so, yeah, we're, we'll be doing a lot of work in the next academic year to really build that alignment between, to your point, you know, students are learning the basics of finance and financial literacy, but how is that leading to workforce development? And how is that building opportunities for our students to then go out and find jobs in finance and banking and other accounting, bookkeeping, in those roles? Um, because there is a desperate demand in Northern Colorado for folks in those professional services.
Just real quick, one of my business meetings, um, I was meeting with a V P from Points West. He brought up this new partnership and they wanted, they were going to C S U to figure out how to get training and, um, I said, do you don't need C S U, you just need Thompson? And so then I connected, um, Andy and I, Susan Scott, go along?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so they're now working with them and then this financial literacy law came up and so now it's, it's just working together really well. Um, the only other thing is I do, I do think this kind of a conversation with the students and staff, even if not looking at changing graduation requirements, it has brought to light some, many interesting things, like the students think they're gonna fulfill the fitness, but they ended up doing health again. So I think that's, that's always a good, um, thing to do and, um, I would like to see the, whatever policy you're recommending. But, yeah.
No.
I don't think I did any.
I was just thinking of it.
Thank you, I don't think I do. Denise? Okay, one around.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a great night.
Yep.
We've been having a great night, right?
All right. Hello, you two. We are gonna work on, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget update.
So based on the last discussion, I flashed back to having dropped out of college. Went back, went back to college and in order to graduate, the same time I would have if I'd stayed in all along, I needed two credits. So I took scuba diving. Cause that was the only physical, that was two credits. So there's a way and it considered as my requirement. Uh, before we get into the budget, cu- a quick update, um, Plant Moran, uh, as you know, did our last year's audit, and then they were hired and authorized by the board to continue their work on, uh, bond reconciliation, grant reconciliation. They're continuing to do their work, uh, we have some additional work to do, they're expected to finish early fall. Uh, and that will all be incorporated into the next year's audit. Uh, today, uh, our new auditors, uh, Clifton Larson, hey, what's the name of her? C L A, uh, Zach and I were on the kickoff meeting for the twenty twenty-five audit with the understatement of the things that they need. Uh, they're gonna have access to the work papers of the prior auditor, they're gonna know everything, they knew everything from what happened from the last audit, so, um, we, we think we're gonna have, there's a platform, we can exchange information. They can, uh, we're gonna have weekly meetings and everything else like that. In addition, Zach has started the process to train our business services staff on their role of the audit. It's not just the CFO and the business, the director of finance, it's the entire business services and what their role is and so they understand what they do on a daily basis of how it flows through. And they're excited about being participated. Some of them have said they're excited about it. They don't quite know the amount of work they're gonna have to do. So if we start with, uh, just again, tying it back to our strategic plan, um, increased alignment with resources to reflect the needs. Next year, we're gonna have clearer connections, as was talked about by Learning Services earlier, in identifying what the needs are in each of the different classrooms. We know it intellectually that we're making those connections, but we need to put them in paper on that part. And then secondly, transparency and use of resources, um, the information needs to be more useful and accessible. Uh, that is our goal, uh, it's not as accessible as we'd like to. Uh, just administratively, uh, the schedule, the draft was made available. Um, we have been updating the one that's on the website as we've identified typos and missing information. That went on the website May twenty eighth, on the same day that was added newspaper. Copies were delivered to the Loveland and Berthold libraries and the Loveland Chamber of Commerce as required by board policy. Uh, this coming Monday at five P M, June ninth, in this room, there'll be a community forum that's been, uh, put out in, in the, uh, legal notice as well as, uh, social media as well. Uh, and then the next board meeting on June twenty eighth, uh, there will be a separate public comment period?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, thank you. I'm glad somebody's listening.
You're, you're coming back for that, by the way.
June eighteenth, uh, next board meeting, public comment will be separate from the regular public comment period as required by state law. And hopefully thereafter, there'll be a board vote. Um, and then, um, echoing what I've been saying all along, it had been my intention to update the format of the budget and we were only able to do that on page three, which is the summary page that has the, uh, year-to-date information and the projected information going on in addition to the budget. Zach and I kept looking at each other saying, what can we do, what can we do? And as it got closer and closer, we realized we weren't gonna be able to do it in addition to do the daily work and prepare for the audit. But, we're going to move from the Excel and the economy. But, we're going to move from the Excel and the accounting system, two systems, to adjust the accounting system for presenting the budget. We plan to recast the budget, if it's adopted, with the same numbers, but in the same format, and we will come back to you with the new format that we hope to have, which would then include the prior period information that you can then do the comparisons on there. Ideally, we would've had that before, but at least we will be getting to that system, so. You will get an end of the year information of what actually happened, based on our information before the audit. You'll also get financials of the end of the year once the audit is done, and you'll be told of any adjustments that the auditors have been making. So, uh, the, uh, next slide, please, um, so student headcount, um, money is driven based on the number of peoples coming in our door. Uh, we have about five hundred less projected than we had in the previous year. Uh, luckily, uh, when we get to the slide later, the state has chosen to hold us harmless of the same dollar amount as last year, regardless of the number. We would've got less money even with the averaging, we're not gonna have that happen this year, but this is an indication. Uh, one of the questions that came up at the last board meeting was, what was the per pupil count, uh, dollar amount? It was ten, uh, seven ninety-one last year and, and this year is gonna be eleven three fourteen, three fifty. So, number goes up, but we also have fewer pupils, so if we, again, numbers don't lie. Don't do that. Uh, echoing what was discussed, uh, by Dr. Gabriel and, uh, and Patty, during our process of identifying what the needs were at the student level, we, we actually looked at what, I was very impressed, what was the need? For the special needs, for the people that are at risk, but in addition, there was discussion about the people that were not at risk, that the people were gifted or the whatever type thing. I was impressed at the knowledge of what was going on at each school, both at the student level, the demographic level, and at the teacher level. Knowing that some teachers were excellent, some teachers could use some additional training on certain parts. So some of that discussion came into, well, do we need a TOSA, do we need a counselor, what, what's the staffing that needs to be there? Uh, we hope to back that up earlier into this next year than we did at the end, but that process will continue. Uh, so the next slide takes the per pupil count and actually shows what Thompson, the Loveland, uh, classical school and New Vision, uh, school, the charter schools, what they get as well. Cause under state law and our agreement with the charters that we sponsor, every school gets the same amount per pupil. Uh, the next slide, uh, it, no change from last, uh, board presentation, this is show how the money comes from the taxpayer to help support our schools. Next slide, uh, shows, uh, preliminary estimated other revenue other than taxes, there's no change from the slide at that point. Um, again, the transportation slide, they used to get that money, doesn't cover all our costs. Um, next slide, FTE costs, uh, we, one of the questions was asked, what is the minimum on the classified staff? Uh, what the attempt did last year was not to get to nineteen dollars, but to, to get to eighteen dollars. And with the increase that'll be going at the, the new, uh, minimal will be eighteen point, uh, forty-five. So it's still moving forward, it's not at the nineteen yet. Um, again, there's no change to the para, uh, retirement assessment for the employee or the employer's, uh, share, so that's not an increased cost here, but again, health, dental, life is the biggest cost that is absorbed for the expenses to us. Next slide, um, this is an example of the, um, how do I wanna use it? Unconventional budgeting, uh, legally authorized. The top part is dealing with FTE costs, because we think about the FTEs in the classroom, that's why it's separate. But there's lots of other payroll costs in the non-FTE costs, because it's not the actual teachers and the staff in the classroom. So it's extra duty, it's, uh, incentives, it's extra pro, extra hours for drivers in the transportation department. It's down there, going forward, personnel will be above, we'll still have the FTE, but then we'll have other personnel, and then we'll do non-FTE, which is truly non-FTE, that's going forward. Uh, next slide talks about, uh, I picked certain slide, uh, I'm not doing all the slides of the budget package, uh, but special education is an important part of our, our operation. Uh, the, we are spending more next year, uh, and because we do have additional costs that we need to continue to pay for. Uh, the next slide covers the highest non-FTE expenditures, which includes some FTE expenditures. Uh, certain instances, the substitutes are there. On a regular basis, there will be teachers doing professional development, having, dealing with the other parts of their lives, so we have money for substitutes. Uh, this year, school resource officers, um, we, we were adjusting various things of contracting, uh, for what people are being for the special, uh, the additional work that goes with them. Uh, so this identifies the various costs here. I'll make a comment, substitutes are down in the number, that was part of the Budget Balancing Act. If we have to have substitutes, we will still have substitutes, it does not, we may need to come back to you in December or January for a budget adjustment. This is a budgeting, um, discussion as far as what we have to balance the budget. So the next slide, this is the, uh, very hard to read at this point, but it's the, uh, page three from the budget document with, which compares, uh, the approved budget, the amended budget, uh, some projections, including the amended budgets, the preliminary budget for this next year, and then we did some comparisons. We gave you all of them, because the original budget is really comparing to the new budget is the best thing to compare them to each other, cause that's the steady state. The other part is true, because some of those expenses carry over, but some of them were one-time costs that you would, you increase. So we try to give all the information as possible. Our goal is to have this information at the lower level going forward. We are, uh, the way Zach was able to get the budget, we're about one dollar difference in taking from the reserve from last year for what our proposal for next year, uh, we still are drawing from the reserve. Our goal is always not to take as much as reserve as possible, because you always wanna have that for future expenses. We are still within both port, board policy and state law regarding the amount of reserve that you have to have. You always wanna have more, but you deal with what you have to. And then the next slide, um, covers all the things that I talked about before, we're in the general fund, which is the largest number. But we have separate budgets for nutrition, federal grants, student activities, uh, land reserve, uh, grants, bond redemption, we're paying back other debt, it has to go through our books, capital projects. Uh, so all of these will be in, that's when I talked about the items that we didn't discuss in the early part of the agenda. You'll be voting various things like this to actually get the authorization to go forward. So that was the quick version.
Wow, sure was.
The reality is, everything that was discussed at this board meeting before this, and every board meeting you have on a monthly basis, is all in this budget. Zach and I can balance any budget, but it's not our numbers, it's our numbers. It's everybody's district discussion about, what do we pay teachers? What's living wage on classified? What training needs do we have to have? Physical needs. There is money in here for capital, but nowhere near what we need for the millions of dollars to maintain our building. So, this is part of the big picture. I feel ninety-five comfortable, ninety-five percent comfortable with what we're doing with this money? Because everybody in this district is doing it for the right reason. And that translates, when, when I, when Zach and I have been meeting with the budget with the departments, what they talk about, when they talk about a line item, here's what it means. What does it mean for a student? You know, for a postgraduate, you know, what are they gonna do, you know, what's it gonna mean for them? That comes out in this budget. I enjoy it, Zach seems to enjoy it too.
I don't know, there's something sick about that.
And then we get to implement it, you know, that, that whole concept of, you know, you know, the day the budget is adopted, it's out of date, because something happened changed right away, and we're okay with that, because then it becomes, well, do you have money there to cover that? Or you're not gonna spend as much there, what else are you gonna do? When do we have to come back to the board to tell them something's dramatically changed versus this is a little thing? Uh, that's the discussion we have, we talk with our staff. We are trying to educate the departments on their role with the budget, so it is not, well, go ask the CFO for that and say, well, we don't know. As your manager said something, as your supervisor said something, how do you think we should handle it? So it's gonna be educating the entire staff as we go forward. So, welcome any questions that you may have.
We start with Stu.
Thanks for responding to the questions that I sent. Uh, Bob and I exchanged a couple of emails on the same question. I think he couldn't figure out why I couldn't understand what he was saying, and I couldn't figure out why he couldn't answer my question. So I appreciate your statement back. Now I understand why you don't understand what you don't understand, and his next answer took care of it, so thank you.
Um, Don?
I just, I appreciate what you just said about how our presentation is the budget, right? I mean, honestly, everything costs money unfortunately, um, especially in education, that's really unfortunate right now. But, um, you know, every time we approve something, there's a cost to it at some level, even if it, um, isn't a huge cost. When we say yes, there's a cost to it, and so I appreciate that you made that, um, clear as you were presenting this, because the numbers really are just reflecting what we've approved, right? And, um, I appreciate that being part of how we're doing this now, to make the connection between, and to move the conversations into having the people who are making the decisions not outsource that part to you and disconnecting themselves from the financials, I think is gonna be a really nice thing as we get that more embedded and have people be more comfortable with what that means to them. I think it'll be very empowering, um, because I think the, you know, the, the flip side of the training is that right now there's also that like, well, I don't know, there's somebody else just did that part. And I think there's something very empowering about knowing, like, this is what's happening and who made the decision and how they made the decision, and it was me. And so I'm excited to see how that really starts to look as this comes into action, so thanks.
Thank you. When I was CFO of a community health center, my indication of success was when somebody asked a financial question, the chief medical officer answered the question.
Oh, yeah, that's a good stuff.
And it was a financial question. It's like, alright, my job's done, everybody understands what's going on.
Nancy?
Um, first, um, Zach, I'm, uh, I am so, um, grateful for you, um, the work you're doing and the patience you have helped me, so, thank you. Um, we had a good conversation, so, I'm just, this is, I'm keeping what we agreed to, policy. So, um, I think, going forward, just if you could give thought to like, I know you are, the, the change of the budget process. So, yes, we, we look at the numbers every month, but as far as the board saying, these are our priorities, or here's what we're, um, proposing for the budget, to have enough time to say, well, what about this? What if we move this here or, or something? Um, a great example is, um, I, on page, um, eighteen, line fifty-six and line one twenty-six. They're the school site instructional supplies and non-instructional supplies. Combined, it's a cut of about two hundred and sixty-five, and I get we have to balance, but at the same time, I'm like, to me, that's important, we try to see if we can't figure out a way to get a lot of that back, because I know that those two areas are those, those are the areas where a lot of times, um, classified staff and licensed staff are using their money to cover what's not in the classroom that's needed. And I would hate, I just would hate to increase that, um, burden on them. The other thing were just suggestions about ways to improve some of the detail for cap, capital projects, capital reserve. Um, but I think, I think what you're doing is really good work. On the classified pay, I went back through my notes, cause I have a book for every year, and now it's electronic. But the, it wasn't nineteen an hour, it was that we would, we would keep classified pay pace so that it was above Walmart distribution average. And so that, I was expecting that this year is where we would really implement that, but we didn't. Which is why I sent you that, um, kinda schedule of what it could look like if we didn't, but I couldn't carry it all the way out, because I only have the minimum and maximum, I don't know what's in between, so I have no idea what that will cost. Um, but that's something, um, maybe for next year, we could start earlier, like, how do, how would we make that happen?
We already put a, uh, uh, we're starting the budget in January officially for the numbers, but we're, we're starting the budget in the fall.
Okay, okay. So that's really my, and I'll send you the spreadsheet on how I came up with those increases for each one. You can probably just replicate it or come up with your own method, but, um.
And we, we talked about, uh, we talked about this today after your discussion, is that starting, yeah, starting it like in a November or December time, and starting the discussion and, and kind of framing budget around strategy before we even talk about numbers. So we're all in line about what are the strategic objectives of the board? So that we can keep that in mind as to what that looks like when the budget comes out, so it reflects those strategies.
You guys are speaking my, so, yeah, that's the way budgets are supposed to work. It's supposed to reflect whatever your priority strategies are, not the other way around. Um, so anyway, I really appreciate it. Um, Bob, he counseled me today, he said, Nancy, he goes, I know you really want the actual numbers, he goes, and I said, so you're asking me to trust that July sometime they'll, they will be there? He said, yes. I said, okay, Bob, I'll trust you.
Okay, Amy?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the, um, it's not a question, but just, I appreciate the, the human spin that you're putting on the budget, you know, you're talking about how it is our budget, and that, you know, each school, you know, that there's, um, each line item, there's a student behind each line item. So, I, I just appreciate that a lot, so, amongst other things, thank you.
I don't have any questions, Denise?
Ju- just thank you.
Yeah.
This is so nice and easy to follow, so I appreciate it.
Alexandra?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's tough to be the very back one.
It's the bottom line.
Alright, you said it. Um, we have reached the end of our agenda, so this meeting is adjourned.